So I will call this meeting to order. If we could please have a moment of silence. And the flag salute please. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag. And to the Republic. One nation. With liberty and justice for all.
Great, great, thank you. May we have the roll call vote please?
Mr. Callagwire.
Here.
Ms. Darmo.
Here.
Mr. Dovey.
Here.
Mr. Cameron Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Phil Jenkins. Ms. Kamenugian.
Yes.
Mr. Thiwack.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Here.
Ms. Tersichewee.
Present.
May we have the reading of statement of adequate notice please?
Public notice that this meeting pursuant to the Upland Public Meetings Act has been given as follows. By advertising the Burlington County Times and the Courier-Pre, number nine, two thousand and twenty-one. Closing notice on the school bulletin board at main entrances on September ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Closing notice electronically on the district website on October fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. By following written notice with the quirk of Delanco Township on September ninth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on any agenda items?
Ms. Kamenugian, Mr. Jenkins entered the meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Phil Jenkins.
Oh, there he is. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Also, Mrs. Kamenugian, if you're okay with this, I would just request that everyone mute unless you're the one speaking because I'm hearing a lot of feedback. Not everyone else is experiencing that.
Now, that sounds a smidge better. Okay, do we have any public comment on an agenda item? I'll go through and see if I see any hands. I just do not see any hands at this time. I will move this on. For the work session. The presentation. And the finance presentation exhibit B. Steve, I will put this in your hands now and mute myself.
Give one second. Can everyone see that?
Yeah, can you go into presentation mode so it's the text?
Yeah. So I'm in Google, so it's. There it is. You know, initially I wasn't going to do a presentation this month, but I felt like it was important to update a few things that did happen. Especially given some things that are coming up. So real quickly, just like I've been giving the last couple of months. Just an update on tuitions. We did receive, if you notice, there were three missing contracts. Three contracts. Are coming for people that were unexpected in the last week, week and a half. So if you notice, the bottom line with tuitions were now technically. At capacity, I guess you could say, we're technically under, over budget. So that's something which is obviously concerning. I'll give, I can give you more and more information in that in November when things kind of solidified with this. But that's definitely obviously a change from the last couple of meetings where that was, that was in the positive. So I do want to mention that. The pending ones, I did talk to our case manager. They're preschool students potentially who are not eligible yet, but will be eligible throughout the school year at some point. A good thing about preschools are not usually as expensive. So in terms of the budget, as much as five people is a lot of money, it won't be. The full, I guess. What do you normally think of since it is preschool related? So the audit, the auditors came in, I guess about starting three weeks ago and they wrapped up about a week ago. The audit's not done, but they wrapped up their field work at least. So anyhow, we have, we have our budget fund balance that we have to make a decision on. It's not a decision we have to have a board resolution on because the board resolution was passed last June. Just need to know what the board agrees to. And in regards to this. So again, our budget each year is, has a budget fund balance. And what that technically is, is technically surplus from a previous budget year. Budgeting the, budgeting into. Another year. So, for example, if you look at this over the last couple of years, our budget of fund balances has usually been over a million. The reason, one of the, one of the big reasons why our budget in twenty-one, twenty-two. Was needed, needed bridge and cuts was because of that significant difference in the budget fund balance. Which means things happened in that budget year two years ago, which would be nineteen twenty. Something happened, so stuff happened in that year that caused, you know, that fund balance to dip down. Now, in twenty-two, twenty-three, we look like we have a strong fund balance, which is good. Now, that was partially due to probably less sub-costs. Less transportation costs, all because of COVID. So in some ways, COVID probably helped us out in regards to last year's budget. But the other thing we have to keep in mind is. Twenty-three, twenty-four. If our budget fund balance is only four hundred and twenty-four thousand in this year. What is our budget fund balance going to be, especially given that our tuitions are already over budget? What's our budget fund balance going to be in twenty-three, twenty-four? So before we just say this budget, all of one point four million dollars. To twenty-two, twenty-three salaries and expenditures that have a yearly rollover. We got to be careful that we're not setting ourselves up for a bad twenty-three, twenty-four year. So here is kind of what I outlined here. And this is just a recommendation as of October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The only thing we really have to discuss is how much you want to put in capital reserve. Because once that decision is made, we can't go back on that. Everything else, we don't have to make a decision. I'm just simply outlining this as simply as a framework for the conversation. So. Out of the one point four million. In June, there was a resolution that was passed saying we can put up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into capital reserve. We can put, we don't have to put two fifty, we can put anything less than that, we just can't put more. And once we tell the auditors that, they'll adjust our budget fund balance based on that. As I mentioned in the previous slide, I want to be very careful. I want to start reducing the budget fund balance to an appropriate, to no level that is. That is healthier for our budget so that we have sustainability in our budget. The. The issue is that has to be done over time. You can't just cut it down to three hundred thousand and expect to survive. I have some initial budget work done. I believe nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars would allow us to put the facility department back into the budget. Would allow us to put extracurriculars back into the budget, things of that nature. So I thought that was a healthy idea. I also have the two fifty of that. We need to develop our preschool disabled program and an M D program. For Joe Crennan from Long Three to Six. Third to sixth grade. We need startup cost for that, just to get the program started. Hopefully, once we get the program started, those would be one-time expenditures. Because in the future years, we would see the benefit by the reduction in outer district tuition. So in reality, what I'm trying to say here is nine hundred and fifty thousand would be like reoccurring. And that two fifty hopefully would go away because the savings on the outer district placements will then hopefully overtake. Those programs. If not more. Yeah, that leaves us with, that leaves us with ninety-two thousand dollars, which I would just say we use for. One-time expenditures. For example, we have to analyze whether or not we may need a bus. Things of that nature. Things that would not impact a twenty-three, twenty-four school year if the surplus is lower. So. Again, we're not deciding today if, because it's not the budget, it's not the final budget yet. I wanted to kind of put a framework for you. The only thing I need to know is if the board would like to put. However much money up to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in capital reserve. So with that. I open up the questions before I go forward.
Mr. Burns, I have a question. Vera Darmo. I believe when I was looking over some of the information in the budget packet. We have zero dollars in emergency. Capital reserve, is that correct?
We don't have an emergency reserve now.
So, aren't we supposed to have money in there in case? We have an emergency or what is the guidance on that?
You would have, you would have had to put that on the June agenda. At this time, you can now put it into a reserve outside of what was on the resolution in June.
So should we have done that in your professional opinion?
Um, I mean, it's hard for me to go, I mean, I don't want to talk about the past. I've never done an emergency reserve in my, in my workings in Haddon Heights and Haddonfield. We did maintenance reserve. That's something if we had significant surplus, I probably wouldn't like to move on. Because it allows you, what it allows you to do. Is if you put money in there. You have more freedom to take it out versus capital reserve. And if you use for maintenance expenditures, which means let's pretend you had a bad budget year, you could actually. It doesn't work as much. You could at least replace your facility costs, which might be fifty to seventy-five thousand in the budget, at least by using that reserve.
So are you saying we do have a maintenance reserve now or?
I'll just comment anyone what, if I had, if I had a significant surplus this year above the amount that we needed to keep the budget going. That's something which I probably would put on my, put on next June agenda. If that happens.
So capital reserve, that's for building school facilities, correct?
Yes.
So, since, since we don't have any plans to do that, that I know of. Why not put some of that money into that maintenance? Emergency maintenance that you're talking about.
You cannot, because it wasn't on the June, June agenda.
Okay, okay, so if we, I think I asked this before, like if we do have an emergency. Then what's going to happen is because of the time-sensitive nature, nature of emergencies. You're just going to be authorized without a vote to just go spend that money. And then come back and, and deal with it. Is that correct?
From capital reserve, from, from where?
No, for like, say we have, I think I asked this like a long time ago, like say a boiler was to explode. We can't go, you know, we just need to spend that money immediately to fix that. So where does that money come out of?
The general fund.
The general fund. Okay, so there's no special procedure that needs to be followed, that just is immediate.
True emergency, there is emergency contracts that you can, you have to be able, there is a procedure for emergency contracts, yes. But the funding would have to come from that. I can tell you right now, capital reserve has very strict. Measures to take it out. And the best, really the easiest way is really only a budget time. So for example, if you, if you knew you were replacing a boiler or something like that, you put in the actual budget and take the money out then, ahead of time.
We don't have any plans to do any sort of capital projects, correct? I mean, I was looking for our long-term. I forget the exact name of that. Long-term facilities planning. Never could find that, so. So we don't have any plans for that, right? Is that correct?
It has to have things, there, there's projects in it for sure. There's always projects in it otherwise you can't have a capital reserve.
But. What kind of projects do we have?
I'd have to ask the architect to see what was put in. I haven't, I haven't been here long enough to know what the, what was put in there. But what. Were approved prior to putting it in there.
Okay, so that was, that was approved, I think, before I got on the board. So that's why I want to know what's in there. So if you, if.
If you're thinking of, let's pretend we're thinking of bond, right? If you don't mind, I'll talk about my previous district, just because it allows me to give you concrete examples, for example. There, there was several times where there was board resolutions to place things into the L R F P. Because they had ideas that they, they wanted to do in the future. Now, it wasn't something they were going to do. Immediately, but in, in, they knew in the next five years, they would have to. So in order to start developing those plans, they were to do that. The one thing that's important with the capital reserve is. You don't know when things are going to come up. Let's pretend we had an ADA accessible issue that we had addressed and we had to get the architect involved. You know, there are things, there are things that may come up. In the next two or three years, if you don't, that aren't on our radar right now, that we may need to pull from capital reserve for. So that's why you'd want to place money into it. Just because you don't have it on the radar today, doesn't mean it won't be on the radar tomorrow.
Okay, does anybody here on the board or the superintendent remember what some of our long-range projects? Are, since I haven't seen that document, anybody remember, like we're, we might want to build whatever, anybody know? Okay, let's move on then.
What's the balance of the capital reserve right now?
You know, I should have that with me, but I don't have the audit in front of me, but it should be around four hundred thousand, I believe. I have it somewhere. I can, I can get that to you tomorrow if, if you, if you want an exact amount.
What's a, what's a healthy amount that you recommend?
It depends on the district.
Oh, district like ours.
It, it depends on what your goals are. For example, like Haddonfield. We were building up our capital reserve because we were doing a big project to, to. An air handling. Things. So we wanted significant money there. Haddon Heights.
Sorry, just, can you just quantify a significant money?
A million. I probably got a million and a half they're putting in there at the time. Because that project was going to cost that much money, you know. Haddon Heights probably had around four hundred thousand, similar to you. But we were trying to expand it at the end because there were some projects that were coming up that we knew would probably cost one to one point five. So. Obviously, I didn't, I'm not, well, I'm not there for the audit. But I would say that if they followed my recommendations, it would probably around one to one point two million now. But I can't say for sure. So my, so my point being is it depends on the projects. I, I wouldn't put the two fifty. I, I personally, as much as. You know, as much as, it's always nice to put money in reserve. I, I, I still, I think we can all agree that. The budget from last year is still leaving us a little uncomfortable. So I would like a little bit of give. That's why if, if you want to put a hundred, I think we should put something in there. I'm not saying ask for two fifty. I'm actually not saying it all should be two fifty. But. Capital projects creep up on you. And when you least expect it, you need to do something, especially in an old building like Walnut. So you never know what's going to happen. And one project could easily be a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know.
I have a question on that topic. But let's just say completely hypothetically. We planned to, we, yeah, to do a referendum next year for a capital project. If we were, basically if that was the plan to get, to get more money in the pot for, for capital, for a specific capital project. Would it make sense to maybe put less into the capital reserve this year so that we could have it available for other things? Would that be?
I actually go by question. So it depends on the board. This is why, this is why I have to bring it to the board. So. The. Let's pretend you want to help figure five million dollar bond referendum. You could say we're going to use all of our money in capital reserve to offset some of the cost. That way it doesn't hit the taxpayers as hard. So like some boards would say, having the capital reserve allows us to ask for less money from the taxpayers, therefore increasing taxes less. That could be a benefit. Other people would say, if we're going to borrow five million dollars. Who, what does it matter if it's four point five or five? Well, yeah, it wouldn't make sense. So a bond referendum was probably, if you were to start a bond referendum process, you're talking two to three years away, probably. Gotcha, okay. That, I, I, as a really, I mean, Steve, that's, I really love that question. It's a good one.
Steve, this is Phil. I like your recommendations for fund balance. I think it looks very good.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes. Hello?
Muted yourself again, Harry. You were off.
Hold me.
There you go, there you go.
Okay. Right now, you're saying we have four hundred thousand in that capital reserve?
It's a round, I, I have to check the exact number.
Because that was a question that I had. So then we'd be riding with about half, half a million. In there, more or less. So that's one place where we possibly can move money. And I think. Historically, for years, what schools would do is every year they would put in the budget. To put in an, on a new roof that they never put on. So they always had that money. Every year to keep moving forward and use whatever they needed it for. Until many years ago when they had the Jersey School Building Act, et cetera, that. Went forward. And even now, if we're looking at the possibility of bonding. For a specific purpose of building onto a school or creating a totally new school. I believe it's forty percent that the state will cover. So that's something to, to understand, rather than all on the taxpayers, but. And a bond, there's a lot of political energy that needs to go into having a bond succeed. Steve, going back to the very first page, Riverside, they bill quarterly? Is that, am I correct? Because it was the update upon.
Harry, I'm sorry, my internet went down. In the middle of everything you said.
Steve, Harry was just asking whether Riverside bills quarterly.
They bill monthly. If I missed anything else, I'm sorry. Again, I apologize.
Harry's frozen too. No. He's, he's gone.
Um, like you said, we, we can pick, we can pick the one fifty or we can. Like you said, we can lower to a hundred if that's what everyone's more comfortable doing. It gives a little extra money to play with. I would just stress if we do that. We make sure we keep it for one-time cost in the budget. Because once we do salaries, it's reoccurring. I really think we're, we'd be. I think we're very careful with reoccurring costs. We're going to, we need some of it to cover reoccurring costs, but. We're not going to have one point four million dollars. In twenty-three, twenty-four. To cover that. Kind of right now, so. So I don't know, Mercy, we need a quick consensus on that, just to kind of see where people are at.
I can absolutely.
It's not a vote, because they already voted, the board already voted for the up to two fifty. Normally it's be done at committee level. Which is why we would just decide and move on.
Yeah, no. I, I can tell you right now, I feel comfortable with the number that you have presently noted in the presentation. I think that that's. Probably, it's healthy. I think it provides us the flexibility to have additional monies elsewhere. I think if we put too much in there at this point in time. And a project doesn't come up, that money, like you said, is not, we can't reallocate it. So it ties our hands. And as you had mentioned previously, we are in a. We're still in a, a tight budget situation. So it's better to have less money tied somewhere where we can't touch it. As opposed to having a little bit of flexibility for you to be able to utilize in the event that something does come up and we may, we do need to utilize it. So. I like the number that you presented. I'm comfortable with maintaining at one fifty and not going to the max. Phil had mentioned that he too feels that same way. You know, I'm in agreement with that. Does anybody else have a differing opinion? Did you prefer there to be? The max in there of two fifty? Please wish your opinion. If not, then I would assume that we all feel the same way. But please, wish your opinion.
This is Vera. I would like even less money. Let's reduce the tax burden. Then if we have to go out for a bond, the, the taxpayers can decide if they want to do that. So. That's, that's my opinion. Maybe lower it to fifty thousand.
Harry, your hand was up? Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes.
Is, are you responding to me?
Yes, I am. I'm, I'm saying. Please go.
If I, I have some questions that I was asking that. I got cut off, so I don't control that.
I think your internet.
Still hearing me?
Yeah, just barely. You're going in and out. I think it's your internet.
Yeah, well, that's why I was just trying to call so I'd at least be on the phone. But. What, what my question to be, that I was asking at that moment was, how many? Payments does Riverside, how many, how often do they bill us? Is that quarterly? The, excuse me?
Monthly.
That's monthly?
Yeah.
So the, the difference per month? Was eighty-six thousand? From the budgeted to the projected? Hello?
Please, Steve, could you clarify which number Harry is referencing there? I think Steve is frozen too.
He is.
Yeah.
You're talking about the, the numbers on the projected tuition cost slide? Harry?
I'm talking about the projected tuition cost.
Yeah, I think that's a yearly number. Because we budgeted one point.
I'm asking what.
Yeah.
I would, I would have.
Right, but it, it was, the note was updated upon first bill from Riverside. That's what I'm asking. That was.
Yeah, so Steve, I, I can provide some kind of answer here. Steve was just kind of dropped from the meeting because of his connection. But what happens is each year. The numbers do fluctuate when it comes to the tuition. First of all, there's a certified rate for tuition each year. That causes the numbers to fluctuate because that, that number is different from the projections. Then we also have a different number of students attending Riverside than might be, than what might be originally projected. So sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less. So Steve, we're talking about the Riverside tuition numbers and how those numbers can be different. From year to year or how the projection could be different from what, what actually is paid.
Yeah, I mean, they, well, the way Riverside does is they adjusted monthly based on the enrollment. So. Hopefully, a lot of people transfer in in the month of August or October or whatever, it would have changed, it would change it, or vice versa. If a lot of people moved out in one month, it would change the bill as well. So by them adjusting monthly. It, it's kind of, it's kind of good that we have less than adjustment at this, at the end of the year. Or in the future year, but at the same time.
That's what I, I'm, well, that's what. In other words. Um, what I'm just looking at is, because it was the first bill, so that's based on the first bill that was, I'm assuming, September. Correct?
We did, we literally just got that bill the other day. So that's not in the spreadsheet yet. I just haven't, we haven't covered one point two.
Okay, and then. Okay, and then, and it looks like more kids went to B C I T.
Yes.
As regular ed students. And they're, in my understanding, I don't think there's a difference in cost between special ed at B C I T and regular ed.
There's not, just the way you charge it.
The specials, yeah, yeah, that they break it out because of how they have to account for things. And the no I D E A on this. That's projected. So it's just that that's what we're getting.
That's what we're.
That's what we're spending. Yeah, okay. And then. When I look at the fund balance, I had the same question as everyone else about that capital reserve, the fund bound. So that's what we have to figure out and decide. And if they're future capital projects, we have to come up with. Specifics other than what we've already in the pipeline of things that we've been talking about doing. And then. I'm, I'm, I think that the special education program, the expansion of it. Curious how we came up with, with those costs were and what are they for? And. What, what are we doing that costs a quarter of a million dollars? To expand upon? And does grant money exist? Like it does, I believe, for like preschool program costs. Where grant money, but we have to apply for it to get it. Am I off base with that or?
I mean, there's the I D A grant, but that's, that's applied towards the district tuitions. These expansions would be reducing the district tuition, so hopefully by keeping students in district with having those programs. Such as an M D program at a preschool disabled program.
Yeah, but. Yeah, the, the, I, I mean, I don't under, I, I'm just trying to figure out. What are those cost? I mean, startup cost. How, do they, Joe or?
Harry, it's, it's Joe, if you can hear me. First of, in order to, to open up.
Yeah, I can hear you. Yeah, I can hear you.
The staff it, and so hiring the teachers, a full-time teacher plus benefits. Uh, and, and Steve is accounting for that, he's accounting for the need for instructional aids or. Clinical associates, uh, B C B A, R B Ts, all sorts of things that might be needed for a classroom where. We're bringing a population of students in that would otherwise be out of district in a different program. So if we look at that for pre-K, like Steve mentioned, and grades three to five, uh, which is another. Idea on the horizon, uh, those two programs, we need funds to start them up, and as Steve is saying. That will save money, because number one, we're going to be providing the services and the, the education to the students in district. And that's a benefit, uh, and it'll save money when it comes to the tuition, the transportation, all sorts of things.
Now, I, I personally understand that, which is great, but I don't understand if we're paying. Teacher salary year after year, that it's a startup, possibly a one-time startup cost. Funded by the savings in future budget year, I mean, that's, that's the intent of the program, ideally, but I don't. You know, if we're paying teacher salary under that, that, we're adding teachers, if we're doing that, correct? I just think, think we need to talk about and figure out that, because it's also the preschool program. Too, I don't see anything in here about that. Do we have anything of program cost for that as well?
These are all just projections right now, Harry, we, we wouldn't know the exact cost, we know. We would be hiring a teach, a full-time teacher, at least, plus other staff members, uh, furniture, other resources that are needed. Et cetera. Now, you are correct, though, in that, not all the costs are one-time startup costs, that they would be recurring costs. But those costs would be.
That's why.
By the saved money in tuition.
Well, that's not a cost, saving money isn't a cost. Uh, I'm, I'm trying, like you say, I spent, you know, a, a goodly number of years in special ed and private. You know, public schools, and that's what, um, you know, to start up the program, the twenty, uh, you know, I'm glad we have it in there. But I'm trying to figure out, you know, if we had to physically change rooms around or add things. Those are one-time costs, that I, I envision, you know, supplies, materials, um, design. So it's in there, but I, I guess what I'm saying is that, that's work ahead for us to figure out, the board. How, you know, that, you, you, we're saying this is the tentative plan, but then how does it? Shake out, you know, how does it actually occur?
Well, Harry, it's actually simpler for the board than you think. The board simply has to say, Joe, we want a. Grades three through five in district self-contained program, and then I say, okay, I serve at the will of the board, and we're going to make that happen. Now, the question is the timeline, can we do that? Oh, certainly not, but can we plan for that for next year? Yes.
Yeah, and like I say, that. That everyone understands that clearly, and that the work that that'll involve, to make it a program where we do. Actually, uh, once it's set up, we do benefit, and we receive. Benefits from not having to place our students out, and also to bring in students with that same. Category and classification from other districts. Are, are you still able to hear me? It was. Yeah, so I, I, that's what I'm trying to digress conceptually where this takes us. And I, I'm, I know that you created Steve options for us, option one, option two. For, or, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but I don't know what I missed. The R P grant, S R funds. The six hundred and forty thousand eight sixty-six, have we talked about that yet, or are we supposed to be talking about that? Yeah.
We just started talking about fund balance, so.
Excuse me?
Just started talking about fund balance.
Okay, then I'll hold that for, for later, okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I can see. Your thought process behind it, so I appreciate that. It seems that it, you know, you're. You've got the big picture pretty well organized, so thank you, Steve Burns. That's, I, I'm, I'm good.
Mercy, you're muted.
Anybody else have any additional, um, opposition to the existing outside of providing it to be less? Steve, do you have, um. Any advice if we were to lessen it to a hundred thousand, um, like, do you feel uncomfortable with that amount? Since you are the one that is dealing with the finances, what is your, your experience?
I feel good about next, I shouldn't say I feel good, I feel good assuming nothing changes. I feel it has to make the budget work for next year, you know, at, at this point in time. The one thing I must stress, though, is we can, we can say one fifty today. I, I monitor the budget monthly pretty significantly. Like, I try to generate our surplus calculation every month, and once October closes, I'll do the same thing again. If, and also I'm looking at the budget November, as much as your orders need names to do this. Theoretically, the audit doesn't actually get input until December, so we can say tonight, okay, one fifty looks good, but if I see a big issue. I'm gonna come right back to you and say, hey, guys, something's not working out here, I think we should just change this, and the order's gonna be okay, because they haven't inputted anything. I haven't certified anything, nothing's gonna be official until that point, and it's just one number anyway, so.
Right, I, I kind of feel comfortable with that, with waiting for more things to, you know, fall into place, like you said, you were waiting for a couple additional. Contracts to solidify, to find out exactly where we stand budgetarily. I, I'd be comfortable with waiting an additional month until we set in stone exactly where we want to be in regards to that number. Um, does anyone oppose that?
So I'll tell the orders one fifty for now, and just tell them that we are gonna relook at this, reexamine it. And if nothing changes, I'll just come back and say, nothing really has changed, I feel comfortable with that, if something changed, you know, comfortable, I'll tell you.
Okay.
I, I, I also, I'm, I'm more uncomfortable about the future, but, years, to be honest with you, and next year, which sounds crazy, but that's just. That's where I'm at.
Understood, yeah. All right, well then, we'll keep things as is for right this second, until we see more things play out within the next month. And then, once we have our next workshop meeting, we can discuss it again, and that can be the time when we put the stamp on it and say, yes, please. Submit this number and have this certified, so I feel like that's a really good decision.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to share this again, I think my position is all. Oh, uh, Joe, I need you to give me the record again. I apologize for my internet catch, I'm not sure, because my hub is right in front of me. I'm unsure what's going on. Uh, the last thing I wanted to real quickly show, uh, share with you is A R P funds, the grants due November fifteenth. This is, there's been a lot of thought put into this, several meetings with the admin team, and also with the associations, kind of talk things out. The option one, this is what, um, Harry was referring to. Option one kind of says, well, in the S R two grant, we put the facility personnel partially in there. We put part of facility personnel benefits, we put maintenance, we put maintenance items, we put the counselor, those top four things were all put in the S R two grant. To help the budget this year. Obviously, we know we can't function without a custodial department, so we need to get that back to the general fund. So the goal in option two is to place that back into the budget, similar to extracurricular activities, things of that nature for next year. And so that's, that's the biggest difference you'll see from column, option one and option two. Option one. Has pretty much a status quo with the S R two grant, put in for the S R, put in for the A R P grant. And option two, we're trying to put those, that money back into the budget, and instead. With that extra money, we're trying to do a few other things which are bolded at the bottom. And then, if you look at the comment at the bottom, those bolded items would not be expended until at least December of two thousand twenty-two. Therefore, if we did have a budget crunch in twenty-three, twenty-four, we could, we could submit an amendment to change that, if we needed to, to help with that twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So the point being is, the bolded items are what we all kind of agree are significant items that we need. But we, uh, we not feel comfortable earmarking it. Today, without knowing twenty-three, twenty-four's budget, when this grant covers twenty-three, twenty-four as well. So for example, let's pretend we did have to have a tough budget year in twenty-three, twenty-four, we could change the grant. And allocate those bolded items back to, you know, I, you know, I hate to say this, the facility personnel, or facility personnel benefits, things of that nature. And they're about equal amount of funds, approximately. So here's some of the other items that we would like to do in the funds. We have obviously facility maintenance, there's no doubt about it, the COVID costs have increased the HVAC filters. Just making sure that our HVAC systems are working properly, just the disinfectants that we have to purchase, all those things. We would like to keep that mostly funded, like we do with the S R two grant, just to kind of make sure that we have extra costs. Associated in case we have an uptick in those, in those costs. The one thing that we're really seeing a significant, um, deficiency is the learning loss, obviously. When students were at home, they did not learn as effectively as they would in a classroom. So to, to address the learning loss funds, we were gonna hire a basic skills teacher, full-time. For a portion of this year, once we would have the grant submitted and so forth, and for next year. So the next year and a half, we would try to address the learning loss by hiring a basic skills teacher. The extra custodian, we, we've had issues, I've had issues in other, in my other, in my past district as well, when. Our custodian gets, gets COVID, God help, you know, God help us, but it happens, when they are quarantined. And just the fact that those positions are taking on so much extra cleaning and disinfecting, and they're not the same thing. That when someone does get quarantined, or someone does get, get sick, we're really in a bind. So the idea with the hire would be to hire a part-time custodian that in twenty-three, twenty-four, we would get rid of, hopefully COVID would not be an issue. And for one and a half years more of this, but we said that a year ago, so, so we'll see. But the idea, this would help us for the next year and a half, to give our director facilities a little extra room to help disinfect the buildings. On that same note, if you remember in the S, in the, uh, in the rifts last year, we rifted. A person, basically another maintenance person, so our current director of facilities. Cuts all of our lawns, he does all of our maintenance, and he also does custodial work at times, depending on what is needed. Uh, the hope is for spring and for next year, to give him the relief, to give him some relief. We didn't want to hire a position, because if, if we can't support the position in twenty-three, twenty-four, we didn't want to get rid of it. But at least during this COVID environment, to give him some extra support with the extra custodian and the grounds contract. That would help immensely focus on our HVAC systems, the maintenance, our roofs, things of that nature. And just being a director of facilities, which is already a full-time job in its, in of itself. If you're watching news, I think everyone's heard about, basically, there's a worker shortage, and building substitutes are. Trying, our, our attempt to try to address our substitute shortage. Obviously, we're not gonna solve all our issues with this, but what we're trying to do is, if we hire four people, two for, one for each building, but they're part-time positions. So we wouldn't have to pay benefits, for example, if we told one person that they would be hired Monday, Wednesday, Friday, it would automatically be a substitute for those days. And on Tuesday, Thursday, we'd hire the other person, that would, that would guarantee us one substitute in every building, every day of the week. And we think that would maybe draw some more candidates versus someone who, versus what we currently do, which is. Someone's out today, let's try to get a sub, so at least we're guaranteed one, we would be guaranteed one sub in the buildings, which would help us out. And again, that's for a year and a half, to try to help during these quarantines and, and this COVID, you know, COVID issues. We already talked about the stipends for lunch, this was back, I forget if it was July or August, when, when Joe mentioned this. The extra lunch periods require extra stipends, and we mentioned back then that we were gonna put them in the A R P grant. We deserve our next, we did it for the next two years, to make sure that if needed for next year, we're covered as well. Again, the bolded items are kind of our wish list of one-time costs, that would not affect future budget years, but things that are absolutely really needed. One is probably the highest priority on there is probably that phone system. Uh, our phone system is, without saying, without saying, but being right one, it's. It's, it's old, I mean, it is just, it's antiquated, uh, when you call out, it takes a good five to ten seconds for it to actually call. So we would like to go to a, a V O I P type system, which is what most districts would have at this time. Uh, Chromebooks, obviously, one-on-one initiative, plus, you know, virtual learning is never, is not going away in terms of people being quarantined, things of that nature, so. Just making sure our Chromebook are up, up to par and constantly being replaced. Display panels, we have about eight more to replace. Uh, so that would be nice to get that done, and two copiers. Are probably older than my professional career, so, they're pretty old. They need to be replaced, and I would like to, rather than do a lease, again, if this was an option, rather than do a lease. We just buy the copiers, that way, future budget years would actually have savings, because they would be our machines versus leasing machines. So that's one option. Some of the facility items that we were talking about is just constantly looking at our HVAC, HVAC upgrades. We would like to replace a couple of unit ventilators, maybe purchasing air purifiers, these are all items that I think we would all say. These are needed, these are things that we would like to do, but again, we're gonna wait till next December, till I can tell you that our budget looks. Solid for twenty-three, twenty-four, at least I can predict at least a little bit better. So there, there, there are the initial ideas there, and just so you know, that is the, there's different parts of this grant. That was this overarching clump of six hundred and forty thousand dollars. There's also subparts of the grant that are other additional amounts of money, so for example, if you look back at that slide. You'll notice, I didn't mention the counselor at all. It's not because we were cutting the counselor, it's actually because there's a separate item here, like mental health support staffing grant. That we're hoping to potentially increase that part-time counselor, that's currently being supplied by the S R two funds. Our goal is to try to increase the hours, potentially even the full-time, for the next two years. There's also beyond, there's also a grant for beyond the school day activities, so we'll offer enrichment activities for the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four. Since the S R two funds already have funds allocated for, um. I believe, for this year, and same thing for the summer learning and enrichment, same thing, uh, same thing. Um, and then obviously, the accelerated learning coaching and educators program is more for professional development, so we'll develop a professional development plan. To spend those funds over a two-year period. So again, these grants go through twenty-three, twenty-four, which is important to understand. So it's not like we have, we have all this money, just for now, we can use it for future years, um, which is what we're trying to do with this. So Harry, if you want to go back.
Yeah, I, here, here are my questions, Steve, the, um. How many basic skills teachers are we talking about?
It's one full-time person, but over probably about a year and a half.
Okay, so this is for a year and a half.
Part of this year.
Okay, okay, that, that makes sense, because the salary didn't seem quite right. And the provide ground support, but that, they're not, we're not contracting out to get someone to cut the grass for us, are we?
That's what we're gonna try to do for a year and a half, versus, versus potentially.
I think the, I think the township needs to be approached about cutting the grass. I mean, if we're gonna pay, pay them thirty-seven thousand dollars to cut.
Oh, we can do that, we, we can, we can, we can, we can reach out and.
Maybe, hey, Bob, maybe, you know, any, anyone still on the council?
Gladly resign my position on the board for a contract cutting the school's grass.
Yeah, I know, that's problematic.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, I don't think we can, I don't think we can afford to have some, you know, that, I thought it was there. With the idea that that's for cleaning, for the utilize that, that it was showing up as grounds contract. That it was showing up as grounds contract, but it was showing up to be in the extra custodian. You know, what we're talking about for the cleaning purposes, et cetera, that helped disinfect for a year and a half. That I thought that, so are we talking about one person for the extra custodian and then a contract on top of that?
Yes, yes, yes. Part-time custodian.
Yeah, I, I personally, I don't, I don't think we can afford that grounds contract. And I saw what was being done. I mean, it was, you know, what we were asking one person to do is for. Cutting grass was, you know, it'd be fine if that was his only job, but. You know, it, it, it does need to be addressed, but I don't think this is a problem of throwing money out or just a contract if someone addresses it. Unless, no, I'm teasing, I'm teasing. So.
Harry, Harry, just to respond to that for a moment.
Yeah.
Reason that that was put in there was because Tim Allen, who is. Like, like Stephen was saying, he, he's basically being the Swiss Army knife of facilities in that he's doing all sorts of work. And, and Tim's team is doing all sorts of different tasks as well. We know that. They're working hard. They're working every day. And at the same time, Tim lost a maintenance person last year due to the rift. So. Tim has taken on those responsibilities himself. So we just feel that it makes a lot of sense to give Tim the opportunity to do other things. So Stephen mentioned HVAC. That right there could be a full-time job in itself. And yet that's what Tim is also doing. And then he's also doing the grass and he's also doing any other maintenance. And that, that was, that, we feel like we have one of our really great, hardworking, excellent people just completely overloaded right now. And it's, it's important for us to address that.
Yeah, I understand that. That's, you know, I've seen, I mean, I've literally seen. Him going like, it looks like thirty miles an hour on, you know, on. It was in the late spring at Walnut in the back there and I didn't, you know, and then. You know, it's, it, we need that services done, but I think we need to figure out a, a less expensive way to do that. And I, I really think that we should approach the, you know, they have, we pay taxes for. I mean, I see him at parks. I see him at the, you know, doing stuff around town. I mean, that's stuff around town, cutting the grass at the schoolyards. That's, that's my suggestion.
I know, I have no problem doing that, reaching out to them for shared service, see if they'll be open to it.
Yeah.
Don't think it's, and that's a cheaper option, it's a cheaper option, but I still think if you expect it. It's very difficult to expect a director of facilities, especially in this day and age with COVID. And, and he's spending two days out just, just cutting grass at least.
Yeah, but you know. I, I understand and I understand as, you know, practical of having to have the grass cut. But at the same time, I think I'd like to see the money put into education directly. That's my bias.
I have to, I'll.
And building substitute, that's a good idea. Thank you, Vera.
Yeah, I'll second that because we have. I was just going to say, we have our last district goals. What do we have as on reading level? What, what was it? Forty-seven percent of the kids? Is that right? Am I remembering that correctly? I was trying to.
We're not currently discussing the goals there.
But, okay, but the reason I mentioned that is that I agree with Harry that we got to squeeze more money into. Getting reading levels up. We got to get tutoring in. We. We, we need to do more small group. I mean, we just had the strong assessments in Hamilton. And you have a whole range of, of different ranges of learning loss. So you need to do a lot of small group work. I mean, we've got to put us some of that money into education, into tutoring. Those, those subs that we, we call those floating subs in my district that. I, I could agree with those building substitutes if they were put, I mean, they got to be put to use. If no substitutes are required on a certain day, then those substitutes can be pulled to work with kids. Is that the plan?
I mean, yeah, absolutely. There, there, there are.
Definitely. And, you know, we have an absence report every day that we receive and we review and, you know, I can, I can safely say that. On any given day of the school year, there is a high likelihood that we'll have a staff member absent. So it's, it's important. For us to have those subs. But just going back to the grounds and anything related to facilities. You know, I mentioned Tim Allen, but the entire facilities team, I keep describing them as, I mean, they are, they're the heroes of what we're doing when it comes to. Cleaning and sanitizing and making sure that the buildings are safe and healthy for everyone. They're doing an amazing job with that. And at the same time, they are overworked and understaffed. You know, we, we, we simply don't have. The people to keep up with all the needs sometimes. And because of that, that's why Steve is incorporating these items because Tim and his, just desperately need this support.
Well, the, the, the work has to be done, but you know, when I, when I look at it and I say, well, wait a minute. I can get a, an extra custodian for forty-five thousand and, you know, for a year and a half. And it's not, I mean, that's a full-time person, is it not, to help disinfect for a year and a half?
No, it's not. It's a part-time person. A, a full-time custodian would be forty-five plus benefits plus fight give Medicare, hers. I mean, a full-time custodian, you're talking eighty-five, ninety. For one year.
Okay, and so seven, so together, if I add the extra custodian in the grounds contract and have the extra custodian in charge of cutting the grass. I mean, that i- is what I'm looking at is how to accomplish the work that has to get done. And if it's for a year, a year and a half. I, I mean, when you said to help disinfect, what, and part-time, what kind of part-time are we talking about? Because it's the same, I mean, it's, it'd be the same thing as hiring someone to do the grounds. They have to, they're not going to, they're just going to be responsible for doing it. They're not going to have, if they can do it in a day. Or less. Am I correct? And the same thing with the disinfecting. Is that a, just certain times of the day? I'm just trying, I can't.
We disinfected every night.
The person would be there.
And disinfect, are two different things.
So that's a, yeah, I understand. I understood when you distinguish them, but. I mean, we're talking about an extra custodian or is that a part-time custodian?
Part-time custodian.
Okay, and when we say that, so what are we doing? Less, less than twenty-nine hours or?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so if we had two part-time custodians and one. Did the, or they both shared disinfecting and grounds. I'm just trying to figure out. How to make our money go as far as we can with it. And I mean, I like the idea of the building substitute along with what Vera is saying. You know, if you can get a good, and same thing with basic skills, kind of background. They're, they're, they're great if you haven't, that that's another person, consistent person in, in both buildings. And. That I, that the one, you know, okay, the basic skill, I'm still like, it seems. It's like for, for basic skills teachers, we, we don't have any now. They, how many basic skills teachers do we have, Joe?
Do have a skills teacher, but similar to Tim Allen, that teacher is a Swiss Army knife teacher. And is taking on multiple duties, including basic skills. That's why having a, a person dedicated to basic skills only would be essential for us.
And I don't know, I just, it just seems that. I'm just trying to do the math of a hundred and thirty over a year and a half with that breaks down to. And then the, the highlighted bolded items. Continue to upgrade. Is that at both schools? And I think we have to look long and hard at. What Walnut Street School, what kind of future it, it has because of. Some of the structural problems that might have in the HVAC. And we've, you know, we have that other, that air conditioning unit sitting over there. Would that, you know. How much is that going to help? I mean, that's an old building. It's a very old building and it has, you know, some of those problems that. Old buildings do. So maybe that ties into what we were talking about earlier about projected, you know, funding. You know, what we were going to have to do as a, not just a school board, but as a community, as a town. With the schools going forward.
Stephen.
Yeah, I mean, I, I really, go, go ahead, Vera.
No, I wanted to get more information on the phone system because I want to research that. What is, what is the, the harm of not moving on the phone system?
And that's why we were saying we wait. It's something that really needs to be done. Like you said, there is a big delay in it. It's not something, I have to get this running.
I don't understand what you mean by delay. So if I call into the school, no one's going to immediately pick up? Are you being like?
But if I called you, it would take, it takes five or 10 seconds to actually dial you. There's, there's a massive delay. It's, it's not, it's not.
Like you punch in the number and it doesn't start ringing for like five seconds?
Even, even longer. Nine-one-one, same thing. I guess.
So.
This is systems, this isn't outdated. So.
What is the name of that system? Like you were saying you wanted a V O I P.
Voice over, voice over internet protocol. Thank you, thank you.
And what we have now, what is that called?
I have written down. I can email it to you. I have written down my office.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's, I wrote it down for this exact reason actually, but not being in the office. I know, you know, I did, did bring, hold on one second. It might be analog.
Just analog? That's the catch-all phrase for the old stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just research this other stuff.
No. Yes, analog. And what it does, and the reason why there's a delay, so this is why I wrote it down. There's an analog and it converts to a, basically it takes it and converts it digital. And that's what causes things to be so slow in how it operates. And the other idea was if we, if you move the phone lines to, you know, V O I P. You'd also be able to move to the cloud. So everything would be backed up by the cloud, kind of the phone system as well.
Steve, you'd also save, right now you're worth paying for POTS lines?
Yep, yeah, absolutely right.
Those costs go away with the, with the voice over IP.
Yes, we, we keep one for each building just in case, you know.
Right.
But yeah, you, usually the old buildings, especially Walnut, you usually, I remember in Hatton Field, we had, I couldn't tell you how many POTS lines and no one knew what they did. And we were able to cut off pretty much all of them for one. And you save like you says, it saves, it saves money per month on the operating.
Right.
Yes.
It saves money down the road, but it's a big cost upfront. And I would prefer that money go to education now, which we're in an emergency situation with all of those months. Being online and a lot of children cannot learn as well. There's, they are, the, the kids in Delanco are already starting. With not the best reading level. Now we add on COVID. We got to go full force into education and delay some of this other stuff. That's how I feel.
That's why. The bolded, that's why it's bolded. It's not going to be purchased until December twenty-twenty-two. So that's why that's.
I said, put it off even further than that.
Yeah, but we don't have to deal with that now. It's just numbers right now that we're looking at that's in the budget.
Okay, I'm just giving my opinion. Put it off even longer.
Yeah, I know, but that, yeah, but. So many changes will be done before then that it's not worth addressing. So we know that's a need going forward. And, you know, we're not going to, we're pushing it down the road because of what you're saying, Vera. I think everyone agrees with that. That the money, and the same thing I, where the mental health support staffing. Is there ways that we can get more funding into that and more services from. Where we're getting all of our special ed services for people. If we need it for, like Vera was saying, you know, sometimes group. You know, that, that a counselor can do group stuff with kids, not just individual, depending on what we need. I don't know what the needs are.
Harry, we, we wouldn't be able to put more money into that sub-grant. That's what we're being given.
Okay, that's allocated. Okay, I have, yeah, I wrote, I, I took a little note card because I saw that was. That some of it, the forty thousand and the forty thousand.
Are we doing any after-school tutoring? Any after-school tutoring at all?
Yes, based on S R two funds, we are going to be starting up an after-school program for English Language Arts as well as STEM. That's what the S R two funds were designed for, specifically for programs like that related to learning loss. Now, under S R two, they didn't call it learning loss. They were calling it academic acceleration. But it's, my opinion of it is we're not really going to be accelerating. We're going to be addressing learning loss.
So how many hours of tutoring after school does that look like? Over what time period? Like three hours a week or?
I, I could share the S R two plan with the full board at another time. I, I, I would really prefer not to get in the weeds on every little aspect.
Can you do like a very general, like two times a week for two months, like a very general overview?
Uh, it, it could be that. I, I, I'm not prepared to discuss that program right now.
Okay, but maybe next meeting?
I can share it with the board, as I said.
Okay, thank you.
And I also want to comment, we have these funds as well that will be used for those kind of programs as well.
That sub-grant, the, is, I don't know, I thought that that was a, as opposed to the forty K. That that was, you know, that was it, that all, you know, that was like the maximum that districts got or certain size districts got. But I thought that the. Accelerated learning coaching, was that also capped? As well as that eighty-eight.
A certain amount of funds.
Five oh one.
This, this S R two was already discussed and approved by the board months ago. So I, I, like I said, I'm not really prepared to discuss the programs right now, but I can share that and reshare.
No, 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 that's fine. I just, yeah, okay, thank you. I think I said, because I made my note of breaking that out, the ARP and the S, you know, and trying to find out. You know, there was the, the sub-grant, there was the, you know, the total of eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, four sixty-two. But that will go away after what, year and a half?
Yeah, year and a half, two years, yeah.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, Harry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the grant goes through twenty-three, twenty-four, so that's probably budget funds over multiple years.
Okay, no, that's fine. I'm just trying to get a bigger picture. And like I say, I can see the mentality behind it. So thanks for that. And it is, it's a combination of going backwards, forward and projecting and. You know, leaving enough that you can move around if need be, if there's emergencies. And it looks like you, you've covered it in two or three ways. So thanks for that work. That, those are my questions with, with.
For the counselor, are you saying that there would be, because on, on this screen that you're showing right now, it says. Because on, on this screen that you're showing right now, it says increased part time councils or hours for the next couple of years. On the previous slide, you have. Um. Option click places to counselors into the operating budget.
Well, that meant it was not two in S R two.
Oh, option two. Okay, I missed, I missed that. Okay. So are you saying though that there would be, we're using both of those funds together to get a full time counselor? Like what exactly?
Basically, again, I put facility, when I mentioned the facility budget going in the operating budget, I included a counselor. So I, I tried to take the cost that we want to project the twenty three, twenty four. Because I would like, I would like to know what those costs are and how we can do it, especially given our fund balance situation for next year. I put the facility person and the counselor in the operating budget for next year, part time, part time. So the idea is to use these additional funds and the S R two to try to make sure we can get a, make that part time as close to full time, if not full time for the next two years.
Gotcha.
And then after that, we'll have to see. But like I said, I'm trying to put as much into the budget because I want to try, my, my biggest thing is sustainability. He, it was, if the council is not in the budget, what happens in two years?
Right. And I guess that's my question too about the facilities personnel. Um, so that is your plan as well? Like we had to, you know, riff somebody.
Yeah, the extra custodian has seen exactly is that, it's an extra one that we would obviously not have after one and a half years. That's why it's. Hopefully COVID is not, not an issue. And that's why we were trying to go with the grounds contract because we don't want to have to riff. Riff people in a year and a half. The idea is to hire someone to help out during COVID. And hopefully if this alleviates a little bit in a year and a half, maybe we'll be in a different situation.
Right, but you have a facility personnel.
Yes, the, the personnel that's in, the personnel that's was in our budget and partially placed into the S R two is fully in the budget.
Okay.
Yes.
Um. Question, uh, I'm not a fan of grass, so I'm just gonna start by saying that. Seems like a waste of money to me. Um, is there any way instead to put money towards landscaping that is more sustainable in the future? So we don't have to constantly be hiring people to mow the lawn at most of which is not used?
There's a lot of property. I, I think that would cost significant dollars.
Well, you can have, you know, you can have grass that is sustainable grass that you don't need to mow every year.
It's roughly nine and a half acres.
What is that? I'm so, I'm sorry.
I did a quick measurement while I was sitting here, uh, listening to your presentation, Steve. It's roughly nine and a half acres, give or take some abnormalities.
Wow. That's pretty impressive.
I mean, for a yearly contract, it's not a terrible price, but.
I like Kat's point about research grass. I mean, I'm sure they have that. There's varieties that, you know, that. Maybe you don't need to mow as often or whatever. And on that note, I just want to say Tim Allen, he, he's cutting the grass right across from my house. Man, he did a great job. I never saw that field look so good. Anyway, keep going.
Anyway, I just like, like longer term, it doesn't make sense to me to hire somebody to cut grass. You know, you know what I mean?
Wait, well.
From a personal.
Long term.
I am, I'm sorry, Steve. I'm somebody who doesn't like spending money on grass. Um, but you said, I mean, of course it's take a lot of money to keep up. And uh, you know, I completely agree with that from, from, from a personal standpoint, I think replanning all the grass. Like, because you have to get rid of the grass in order to do that, I would assume.
Um, well, you would, you would just like seed over. You could cut it down really low, seed over with grass that's meant to be taller that you just, you know, cut down once or twice a year.
Virtual grass.
I like this idea. Let's, let's go more into this.
Yeah, I don't know. Not, we're talking nine and a half acres of reseeding. Now, but either way, I feel like we're literally.
Throw this out. If, if we were going to consider different kinds of grass, the, the way to go would probably be to start small. You pick, you know, half an acre and start there and then. Trouble shoot the process and then see if it's appropriate to scale up.
I, I appreciate the idea. However, the, this money is limited to only the next year and a half. And that's why this idea was being put forth. Because as I mentioned, Tim Allen is pushing himself beyond the limit to get all of this work done as one person.
Mowing nine and a half acres is insane. It's a way to spend your time.
You should see how fast he goes. Oh my God, he goes so fast on that thing.
Well, that's what I mean though. We're, we're, we're losing Tim to that task rather than having him focus on other things. That is, he is a big deal. So I want you to imagine that I'm on the mower out there two days. Say, why is our superintendent doing that? And I'm going to say, well, I'm the only person who can do it. And, and it's the case right now with Tim. That's, that's really not the best use of our dis- our director of facilities when he has many other tasks on his plate as well. That's, that's the whole point of this. He needs time to do other things as well.
Grass doesn't need to be mown in the wintertime.
No.
That is.
So if this were. Is this contract, the grounds contract for the growing season?
We, we would probably, I, I mean, we would solicit quotes, things of that nature. And um, yeah, it would. It would be, there's different ways of doing the contract. We haven't, we haven't gotten the courts yet. This is not idea of pricing. It may be high, we may be a high price and we can reallocate it. But what you do is, for example, some places would bill per week. Or per cut, sorry, per cut. Others would go like they would say, we would want to do it twice a week and it's how much, you know. So it depends on what they would do. We would have to bring people out and actually get their ideas of how they want to do it and see the cost. But no, I agree with you. Certain times of year has to cut more or less. For example, early spring and fall is cut more than the dead of summer when the heat is beating on it. And the winter, obviously.
Yeah, I estimated roughly twenty six to thirty weeks of cutting weather, give or take.
You're a resident, resident grass expert. I love it.
Yeah, so basically it's like. Uh, one year, you know, fifty two weeks in a year.
Right. Um.
Well, part, pardon the pun, but our board is in the weeds on this. Um, when it comes to this topic, I. I feel like what we need, and this is my recommendation as a superintendent, you know, we have a business administrator. Who has a long view in mind when it comes to our budget. He also looks at the short term and Steve's done a fantastic job with this. We also have a director of facilities who's been involved in part of this discussion. And we were the ones advocating for him to have more time to do other things versus the grass cutting. Um. So no matter what, I just, I think it's important for the board to consider that when we have great people working really hard on things. I don't want them to be overloaded with tasks that we could potentially have other people do by adding either additional staff or outsourcing that service. And again, this is, this, this, I, I agree with Vera. We absolutely need to focus on learning, instruction, academic achievement and everything related to that. But at the same time, uh, the nuts and bolts of our district, uh, definitely need some support as well.
Remember, the association also was, was involved in this and supported this idea, um, supported these ideas as well.
I see Dana Mater with her hand up. Can she make a comment, Dana Mater, or no?
No.
A public comment.
Correct, correct. And do we need to decide this?
This, the reason why I wanted to bring this up today, and again, this is still a dra- in draft form. Because the grants due, I think, November fifteenth. So in November, the first meeting in November, we're gonna probably have to approve this, we can submit it. So I didn't want to, I didn't want to bring this up on November, whatever that date is. Um, because I, I didn't want to have the first conversation and I wanted to, we bring up what people have been discussing in our district on this today. So that on November, they'd be like, you know, you know, we'd be ready to go. So.
Okay. So we have some time to think about it. Yeah, I mean, if there, I, I mean, I, I agree with. Uh, Mr. Mercer that, you know, as much as possible and Vera, as much as, and Ha- Harry, as, as many of the people have said that need to figure out a way to. You know, make education the focus here. We, you know, ripped several teachers and to me. Um, a priority is making sure that not necess- you know, whatever it needs to be done to make sure the kids are supported because. We already know that they started out uh, a tough year in a tough spot. Things have gotten worse. Um, I hear a lot of rumblings about bullying problems at the school, uh, behavioral issues. So I just want to make sure that. All of those things are the top priority before grasses or something like that. So that's my opinion on it.
Could we?
Reminder, we have this slide as well. All these funds will be used for a lot of those purposes as well. So. It, it's, this slide is like the main slide. It's the bulk of the money. But there's also. The summer learning programs and the beyond the school day activities, which is in addition to the S R two funds, which are also being, which also will be expended. Uh, for, for example, after school tutoring, as Mr. Mercer mentioned.
I like everything you've said so far, Steve. I think we can probably move on to something else now because that's, you know, just things that we're talking about, not. Actual to fact, you know, uh, written and granted yet. Is that correct?
Exactly. I mean, there's still going to be more ways to do it. Um. But uh, we're, we're trying to finalize things for November.
Yeah, working, we're working towards finalizing them is where we are in this process. And we had that, you know, the budget. You know, that I had suggested that everyone, you know, that we all have. Uh, how to build a budget and the time sequences. But I think it also might be worth. Reaching out to B C I T because they have apprenticeship programs and we might be able to get someone in their black seal. Could even be someone from, you know, Delanco Riverside, who knows where, that is a student that can. Work as an apprentice that we apprentice and pay. At the same time, we get the services we need, but not at thirty seven thousand dollars for grass cutting.
That's an excellent idea, Harry.
Yeah, well, I, I, I had apprenticed a young man from there in West Hampton who. Who, I saw him five years later. He was the head of maintenance there. And that's the black seal program they're doing, the uh, to be a maintenance mechanic to, they, they need that certification. So it helps both. It's, you know, you earn while you learn and it makes a full cycle back if we, it's the same thing if we happen to hit a kid. From uh, you know. From Delanco or Riverside or nearby that. So that's the school to work office at B C I T that could be contacted about that.
Okay, that's definitely a good idea. And I think it's something that when they're looking to put this more together and have more discussions about it, that it can definitely be an option. So that it's not necessarily grounds contract, but maybe it's a contract for an apprenticeship that will enable Tim to have. A little bit more time to do what he needs to do because he has somebody that can work with him as an apprentice in that position.
Yeah, that's, that's how it works. I mean. The young man, I had a pre- from a mad shop, I apprentice not only that young man, but he's now the, the police chief in Burlington City. That's, he took that apprentice and that's where he ended up his career path. And it's someone who his stu- his son went here, Mr. Snow. Um, same thing. He came out of that same shop and he's done well. So it's giving, it's, it's a giving back to, but I, you know, I don't want to get us off on. But I think it's something to look into.
So Marissa, if, if you're interested in that, I can certainly reach out to B C I T about that topic.
Let's do that. So that way we can explore that and then we can either. And introduce it into a discussion or we can say that it's just not a possibility one way or another. So it doesn't have to keep revisiting. Cool. All right.
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you. That's a really great uh, piece of advice. And Stephen, thank you so much for this. Presentation. It certainly was thought provoking and it certainly gives us something to, to look at and more information to understand as well. As to how money is going to be allocated from this, um, from the grants that we're receiving. The S R fund, the A R P grant. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, we're going to move this forward. Um, once Steve stops sharing, then we'll move this forward to the draft agenda for October twentieth, twenty twenty one, exhibit C. So, okay, awesome. Thank you. And obviously we have items one through five. Those are the normal items on an agenda. Does anybody have any discussions related to the approval of minutes of the September eighth, twenty twenty one regular meeting? September fifteen, twenty twenty one, regular meeting, exhibit D. Okay, nobody has anything. That's good to know. Um, does anybody have anything to know in regards to the acceptance of the reports of the board secretary and treasurer for August twenty twenty one, which are in agreement with, which are exhibit E? Thank you. Does anybody have anything specific to note in regards to the liaison reports that may be brought up during the meeting next week? Cool. Student recognition and obviously the visitors, um, welcome are things that I'm, we'll address next week, not something that we can discuss at this week unless Mr. Mr. Mercer has something to address specifically about student recognition.
Yeah, I just wanted to share one thing, just that the principals are acknowledging students in the schools, just like we mentioned. Uh, they're receiving certificates, pencils and, and or other items to acknowledge the fact that they're students of the month. And we're going to continue to read their names during the board meeting. Uh, parents and the students are invited to attend the, the virtual board meeting. To be part of that. But at the same time, uh, it is important for the board to be aware that students are being recognized during the school day as well.
Awesome. Okay, and then there's the public comment on agenda items specific to this agenda. Um, and then we have, uh, well, I see two hands. Would this be a time, even though it's the workshop discussing the draft agenda to bring that up? Or should I just wait until the end, Amy, for the public comment on non-agenda items? Because it's kind of like a duplication here.
Sure, I'm, well, we're not, um, you, you're reviewing the October twentieth agenda. You're not actually doing the October twentieth public comment. So I would follow our agenda and um, I would follow our agenda for today. And forgive me, I'm trying to pull it back up.
That's okay. To, to wait until public comment on non-agenda items at that point in time.
Yes, have we, and I joined five minutes late because my internet connection or my laptop had actually crashed. So I'm not sure. Did I miss the first public comments already?
Yes.
Okay, so then. Pardon me?
You missed your raid. You raised when you were off.
Yeah. But no, but no, that's perfect. I just wanted to make sure that I was doing it the right way and I wasn't.
No, you're, you're, you're doing it, you're doing it the right way. We're at, we're following, the meeting actually follows. Um, today's October thirteenth agenda. You're just reviewing another document as part of that.
Perfect. That sounds great. I appreciate it. Okay, moving forward. Does anybody?
I, I didn't understand. You're saying that you're not taking public comment at this time. I'm not, I missed that.
Correct.
Yeah.
So even this, this meeting is specifically for discussion. It's a dis- it's a meeting, it's a working meeting. You're not going to take any discussion from the public?
Well, we opened it up at the beginning of the meeting where I asked for public comment on agenda items and nothing was. No, nobody spoke. So I closed it at the, after we just, yeah, so after, at the end, after I discussed, we discussed this, then I'll open it back up again, just like we follow this agenda here over.
Okay, okay. It's just a procedure. Okay, I got you. I got you.
All right, cool. Does anybody have um, anything to discuss in regards to the superintendent's report that Mr. Mercer has put out with? That includes exhibit F, exhibit G, exhibit H, exhibit I. And the um. Additional information after that. Okay, but J, K, L, M, N, N, and O as well. Sorry about that. I didn't see all that. Um, okay.
Oh, I do, I do. We, we're doing now G, letter G.
Sure. What did you have a question on?
Okay, so um, I looked at everything like two days ago and all the, the stuff in yellow, the highlighted stuff. A lot of it wasn't, hadn't been put on yet. So has ever, you know, I'm not sure has, have all of these things been put on since then? Because I only glass glanced at it quickly before the meeting.
Yes, they're all in the packet.
Okay, so I did look at L, a virtual instruction plan. I thought, I just want to comment that um, it's going, if, if. We have to go to virtual instruction because you always have to plan for that. I'm glad to see that it's, it's a full day. It's a full school day. So people need to be aware of that. Um, mentoring plan, is that only for the new? Like uh, student teachers and new teachers? Is that what that refers to?
It's for newly hired teachers who do not yet have their standard certificate or other staff members. So right now, technically it impacts one teacher. Right now, technically it impacts one teacher, but we do have other teachers that are. Uh, working on acquiring their certificates, uh, earning their certificates. So. Uh, that plan does impact one person officially right now, but could impact a couple more people in the coming months.
Okay. And what I really wanted to comment more on was letter H district goals. It seems like we're basically still using the um, Fontis and Pennell system, which is the letter. The uh, reading level by letters, um, which is in Raz Kids, the Raz Kids program. And um, we did that last year and. Uh, I, I'm wondering how parents are informed about this. Are they? Are they uniformly given as um, your directive as superintendent? Do you have the teachers inform the parents, okay, your child is starting at. Letter M, which is really proficiency should be at letter Q. So they're not proficient. They're not at where they should be, but our goal is to get them. Like, are you informing parents throughout the year?
Teachers uh, do inform parents of the student's progress throughout the year. As well as, uh, you know, we have parent teacher conferences that happen twice a year. As, as the board is aware, we have evening conferences being added this year. So not only is there communication to parents, but there are also meetings with parents for the opportunity to learn about how their child is doing. Yes.
Okay, so since we're using this as our, you know, the Fontes and Pennell for our district goals. Do you direct teachers specifically to inform the parents? Your child is at this level, which is either below, at, or above. Do you specifically um, direct the teachers? Because I think that should be very important for parents to know. Like they shouldn't know in June, oh, my kid is really far behind and he's not reading at. He's not where he should be. His proficiency level is not where it should be. They gotta, they gotta be on that path. As soon as possible to know um, what they're shooting for. And the letters.
Question is, do, do teachers share info with parents? The answer is yes. If.
Not just info, but the letter.
Tell teachers do this, this way? The answer is no.
Well, I think you should because that's, thi- this letter system that Fontis and Pennell has. Is, is easy to understand. If you know that letter is indicative of being proficient for that grade level. So I would, what is wrong with directing teachers to? Let parents know very specifically in the beginning of the year at every parent teacher conference and report cards. What the proficiency level of their child is.
I, I never, I, I've never indicated there's anything wrong with it.
And it's so you do do that.
It's quite possible that the.
Oh, Miss Donald, I said that I do not specifically direct teachers to inform parents that way, but I'm also saying there's nothing wrong with it.
Well, I would like, I, I would like to ask the board if they would support me in asking Mr. Mercer. To specifically direct all teachers to do that. Am, am I asking that in the right way? Because I'm asking the whole board. Am I doing that right?
I say no, let Mr. Mercer do his job. It's not your job.
Right. It's not our job to.
This is about informing.
The how, you're. You're trying to tell.
Yeah, but uh. On proficiency level in a very clear way is, is uh, you know, I think that's part of my oversight. I want to make sure, well, he said he does interact all teachers.
I have a thought. Maybe we can look for some research because there, there might be evidence out there that informing parents of that information is helpful.
I just feel like. But, but Steve, Steve. I must now direct teachers to inform parents of information about their children. This is already happening. The, the, first of all, the teachers are, we have interim reports, we have report cards, we have a Genesis grade book. We have parent teacher conferences. So I'm not, I'm not saying that teachers aren't ever attracted to inform parents. But this very specific question from Vera is the answer is no. I have not said to teachers, you must inform parents. Uh, the, the reading levels and, and all that in a specific way. That, that has not occurred. No.
My, my, it was simply that if, if we were going to propose a change like that, it would be good to have evidence opposed to going on our guts.
The whole reason the school report card at a state level came about, the school report card at a state level. And all this state testing came about is because parents wanted to be informed. And my feeling is, you know, really that Fontis and Pennell, it's a better reflection of their reading level than. These state tests, because I just went through the start strong in my district and the kids were like, I want to just get through this. It was not a good reflection of their real ability. That's why I'm, I think this is a plus for our district. Because Fontis and Pennell would be a better reflection than say the NJ S L A.
Well, I, I'm, my thought is, is that when parents go to these parent conferences and the discussion is, you know, opened up and the parents like, how is my kid doing? That then becomes the opportunity for whomever's having that conversation to mention whether or not their, their child is struggling in one area or another. And probably gives information like they should be here, they're here. And you know, we're hoping that we can get them to this next stage. You know, that's my guess that these people, that, you know, individuals who come to conferences. Most likely ask, I'm sure that you've asked that about your own child when she was in school. I know I personally have asked that as a parent. When I go into these parent conferences, I'm asking, how is my child doing? Where are they, where are their strengths? Where are their weaknesses? And then in turn, the educator then provides me with that input.
What I found as um, when I was in the middle school and now I'm all in elementary, is in middle school. We had a lot of grade inflation. Um, you know, parents to, okay, I'm not, I don't want to say anything bad about teachers, but if you have a very. That's why we got this state testing started. So there would be something very objective that the parents could look at. And I think Fontis and Pennell is, could also be a better objective measure, but I've said my part. Uh, you know, I don't have support for this, so I'm just going to leave it there.
Good question.
So just so you understand, you do have support for this. I believe teachers should inform parents of these things. Your specific question about me issuing a directive to teachers saying, here's what you should inform parents of and here's how you should inform them. We have interim reports, we have report cards, we have parent teacher conferences. And out of respect for the professionals, the college educated, certified professionals that we have on our team. I choose not to micromanage that. So i- if my administrative team and I were to look and say, well, we see this as a significant issue. We would talk with teachers about it and say, well, are parents not aware of this? What's happening with parents? I, I just feel like your question is coming out of a place of not really being part of those discussions and I'm just not.
The reason I'm saying it is because the reading level is so low. Based on our data from last year and before COVID. That, that my fear is that parents don't realize how critical it is that. Students are reading on grade level by grade three. This is, this is evidence, an evidence based statement. By grade three, after that most. Te- most education is done through book learning, not just discussion. You have to be reading a lot. You have to have a, a academic vocabulary, which is different from conversational vocabulary. I just feel like if parents knew how critical it was, I'm hoping that that would spur them to be more involved. And I think for one example of how this could be done in a less heavy handed way. Is on a report card or an interim report, just have a little section for putting that Fontis and Pennell. Letter in there and also saying what the proficiency score should, what is expected at that. Timeframe in the year. That's what I would do. I would maybe address that in a standard interim report.
On interim reports, these things are addressed not by specific letters, but if a child is at level, below level or, or exceeding, it is addressed. So I think that. What you're saying is supported, just may not be supported exactly how you want it to be, but I do believe that it is supported and it is carried out.
Yes. And in fact, our report card is a standard space report card if we, specifically speaking about Pearson. And that standard space report card has a number of key elements related to reading. And then the student has a, a rating in that element of exceeding, meeting, uh, progressing or an area of concern. So that is different Vera, from what you're saying about the Fontis and Pennell leveling, absolutely. But it's still in, important information for parents. Uh, this does not mean that, that teachers don't ever share that information though. And I, I just, I just want us to be careful that. You know, we have teachers that are working hard, they're doing a great job, they're communicating with families. I don't want us to make assumptions that they're not doing these things. And I, and nor do I want us to make assumptions that they need to be directed and micromanaged in regard to. What is pretty basic communication with a parent related to literacy.
I'm just trying to find a way to help the reading level. And I think we have to do maybe something that we haven't done before. So I'll, I'll let this move on.
Well, I, I have a, you know, since we're talking. About this, which is fine. It's kind of off the agenda and the path, et cetera. But what Vera said about the K to three, I would think, you know, i- it's, it is valid information. That that's where you want to have kids at their grade level by third grade with reading and math. So that it would be helpful if we put some of this money that's going into helping kids. And the extra money that we're only going to have for a short while and make sure we're pumping in at that level. So that we maybe can break the structural chain. And also to. Buy those kids that are not meeting success by that time. They get them the extra help. That it's a sequential learning process, but putting the emphasis on, yeah, the pre K, the K to. Three to make sure. And then at that point, you know, you want to be alert that, okay, this child is at grade level, this child's above grade level, this child's below grade level. And that our system, from what I um, understand it to be, is that we do do that. That the, you know, that um. It's, it is being done and the things that, you know, you, you were talking about Vera. Is, you know, if you were the superintendent, that would be your job to do. You know, whoever, that would be their preference and that's what, and this has come over a, a number of years that. It's developed to be at this point. And basically, I, the way I saw it, we were finally at a point where we saw right where we were, which was. Using that information and then the whole system, you know, went kaput because of COVID and, you know, standardized tests now. What do they mean? You know, and what, what good are they? For an individual child, they need the help, they need the um, adult resources that we can bring and any extra. As soon as possible. So, and I think the pre, pre K will also help with that. So.
Right.
It's a topic we're discussing, but maybe now. Quite isn't the time.
Thank you.
I have a question about the goals. Uh, this is, we're voting on the edits that you made? Or what, what exactly are, or not voting, but you're just showing this to us and.
Right now, you're not voting.
No, I know, not now. I'm talking, we're looking at the agenda for next week. I understand.
So we're going to discuss it further in executive because as the board is aware, the district goals relate directly to my evaluation. So I'll discuss the goals as they relate to my evaluation. So I think that's an important executive discussion, just like we discussed it last year. Um, but yeah, the, the goals, uh, you know, we, we can discuss them further as they relate to how I'm being evaluated. But in general, the goals, if you look at last year's goals and this year's goals, uh, you know, we partially. We made partial progress on the goals last year, but did not fully achieve them. So I think that it would make sense for us to keep the same goals in place because we only made partial progress toward them. And we all know that last year was the most challenging, most disjointed, disrupted year we've ever seen in education. And quite honestly, you know, everyone's working hard this year, but this year isn't looking so different. With the exception of the fact that we actually have students in the building every day and we're doing full days with lunches. So there are differences, but that, that doesn't mean the level of difficulty has decreased for our, for our staff members. So um, no matter what, I think the goals are worthwhile goals still.
Something we're going to discuss in executive session, right?
Yes, we'll discuss it further then.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to move on to instruction and program exhibit P. Does anybody have anything that they want to bring up or address from exhibit P? Budget and finance. So we're going to look through that. Do we have anything that we want to address? For is A through T, understanding the highlighted portion T.
I have a question for Mr. Burns. So anytime, um, Mr. Stephen Burns. That we have a figure for a hire, like a one to one aide or. I guess that's usually what I see here. And I see a, a, a money figure. Anytime I see that, I should know one hundred percent that that includes, includes salary and benefits. Is that correct?
I mean, yeah, I mean, these, these are, these are school districts we're dealing with.
So it's always salary and benefits included.
Oh, yeah. There's a different charge. It's all, it's an all inclusive charge for that aide.
Okay, because I'm always used to looking at salary, like my step guide is a teacher. And when I look at my yearly salary, that's not including benefits, but this is something different.
Remember, this isn't our, this isn't our personnel. So when we, we're receiving an, a bill, basically. So they're putting the entire amount on the bill. They're not breaking, they're not going to break it down for us. There's no, right, right. I used to do this in high school. Because I send receiver relationships. I used to bill other towns. I would, I would come up with the total and, and bill, you know, and just send them the invoice. Uh, or the, or the contract. That's exactly what's going on here. We're just getting a contract for the aides from these school districts. Um, which is all based on whatever their district is. So I remember last month to being Moorestown. They have their negotiated agreement. They got their, they got their benefits, they got their FICA, they got their curves. Um, it's, it's, I, I, the, the benefits, the fringe benefits that people receive is. More is, is extremely expensive and people don't often equate that to their salary. But in reality, we, we all, when we have those benefits a- at our positions. We make significantly more than we actually come home with because of all the benefits of the, of FICA. The, the pension payments, all those different things.
Oh, I got you. Okay. And on letter M, I was. I, I should have sent this to you as an email comment because maybe you, you're not ready to answer it. And then I, if you're not ready to answer, I could always email it to um, before, before the next meeting. But when I was looking through the King, this is letter M, the Kingsway Learning Center contract. It said that in addition to tuition, they could also charge for extraordinary expenses. And that was, so is that, that's something I should just ask you in an email before the next meeting?
Because I couldn't even tell you exactly what it is, but generally speaking, expenses would be something like what a kid needs. Um. Occupational therapy or physical therapy or um, things of that nature. Uh, there would be things that could not be foreseen potentially, things that may come up. Um, I, I've never have seen, in my experience, I haven't seen a private district, that's a private school. I, I've always seen it as the one to one A, for example, that's often included in that. Um, my point being is, I think the contract is the contract. I, I don't see much more going on there, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I'm, okay, no problem.
With those kind of things, like things that would be child study team related, generally speaking. Like our, um, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, things of those natures could be some of those extraordinary things that maybe build. Once a week, once a month.
So that sixty four K could go up significantly because of extraordinary expenses.
Most, most likely not significantly, uh, because if it was something you're on a routine basis, it would have been incorporated in the contract.
Okay. Okay, my other, my other thing, my last um, comment is on letter S, contract with Bowman and Company. To provide section one thirty two qualified transportation plan for the twenty twenty two school year at an annual rate of two hundred seventy five dollars. And section one twenty five cafeteria plan for the twenty twenty two plan year. for the 2022 plan year for the annual amount of $275. So I emailed you because I had never seen something like that before. But you told me that we have had that contract with Bowman for that specific service before. And it was something that the service they're providing is something that they're legally, we're legally required to provide, correct?
Yes, uh, it's called, they call it cafeteria, but it's basically it's a flexible spending account. And uh, all school districts have to offer that to their employees. And the other one is something that was mandated maybe about a year or two ago is a mandatory transportation flexible spending account. So every district has to offer to their employees. Employees don't have to participate, but we have to offer it. So we have to have a plan. And that's this contract from my knowledge, where you've always had a contract with somebody. I can tell you that this year it was Bowman and honestly, the only way I'm going there is more to memorialize it from a person perspective. It's 500 bucks. It's in a box. It's not.
It's not a big expense. Okay.
Now, it's, it's just, I like doing it. I've always have put this on there. I can't speak for previous agendas, you know, previous years if this was put on there. I've always put it on there on my agenda is more from the way of memorializing the fact that we are complying and offering these services. More of just, you know, almost more acknowledgement of it than else.
Okay. And school districts usually go with an outside company to implement this?
Yeah, I had him in Haddon Heights and Haddon Heights, I both had a Meriflex, which was through often Brown and, often the, the benefited by, are your, your benefit insurer or I'm not talking, the benefit broker for health benefits often include some of these benefits. So for example, Brown and Brown, who I had in Haddon Heights, they provided Meriflex services with that fee. So we went to them and it all worked out nicely. But uh, so yeah, but everyone, everyone has a, usually as a third-party vendor to do it.
Okay, thank you. Those were my questions on that section.
Does anybody else have any other questions? First to the budget and finance section of the agenda? Does anybody have any questions in regards to the operations and facilities exhibit I, I? Okay, policy, a motion is requested to enter the first read. This is what's going to be requested at the meeting, just letting you know. A motion is going to be requested to enter a first reading. Um, and this was exhibit JJ in our public packet. So I hope everyone had a moment to review that. If not, I hope you review it prior to your next meeting. Uh, but this is a policy that is going to come about for a first reading motion.
Okay, two.
Discussion.
Two days ago, it wasn't there, I don't believe, when I reviewed everything. So Mr. Mercer, can you just go over any highlights, things that meet, we might really want to drill in on? Or is it a lot of very standard stuff?
It's all, it's actually all very standard, uh, language. Uh, half of the policies there are language changes related to no child left behind, which it's no longer called no, no child left behind. So those are wording changes that are taking place in, in those policies. And then some of the other policies are required policies where the wording has been changed based on new statutes. So it, this, this is one of the most basic policy updates I've seen in a very long time.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I have a question about the policy. So one of, one of the items is, gosh, how it's broken down. A, B, C, D, uh, D to B.
What page is that? What page is it on? Because there's like.
It's number six in the PDF. I don't know what.
Okay.
You could just give the name of the policy?
It's a subsection of a policy about remote public meetings. And it says the board shall or shall not, I guess that's the decision that we're making. Require members of the public to state prior to providing public comment, whether they wish to speak and to identify themselves prior to speaking.
Yes, we shall require that.
Is that what we already have in place? Because that's what we're deciding. I can't.
That's what we're already doing. So a lot of these policies where choices are being made, either the policy's already in place that way or the practice has been in place. But they still offer us that choice. My recommendation to the board with certain things is basically the same thing that we've already had with just the wording changes. So, you know, we do require that. So for example, I've, if a member of the public wants to speak right now, they can't just blurt something out. You know, they, they need to be recognized by the president. They need to state that they wish to speak, et cetera, et cetera. You know, so it's, it's a process and it's, it's better than not having them.
Maybe my broader question, having not been on the policy board, is how do we know what in here is the stuff that we need to look at? Is it the thing with writing on it? That's what I thought.
So all right, so that's good, that's a good question. So when you look at those policies, the, the, it depends on the policy that, that you're looking at. So for example, sometimes a policy will have a few uh, words in bold. Those are the only words that have been changed based on, for example, new state statutes or new recommendations from the state. Those words in bold are the changes. Everything else was already there. Sometimes there is a policy that's a completely new policy that you, you'll, you'll look and say, well, I don't see any bold words here at all. And that's because that whole policy is brand new. Um, but what I've done is I've reviewed every one of them and I just, I just kind of put some markings there saying, okay, because a lot of the times, uh, the policies, we, we have to look at them more carefully and say, well, is that the language we want and all that? These ones are, are like I said, the most, some of the most basic things I've ever seen. So the, the, the changing from no child left behind to the every student succeeds act or something to that effect. I mean, that's, that's just so basic. I don't know why our board would object to that. But it, it's, it's something for the board view and, and the policies, you know, it, that's an important task for the board. And the board is a policymaking governing body. So, you know, that, that's why, you know, you're receiving them. Uh, I, I think I put them in the, in the folder. It might've been on Friday. It might've been, I, Steve and I would have to confer on that, but no matter what, you know, they, we don't expect you to understand every policy or know every word of every policy. But, but a lot of the policy language is already in our policies. It's just being updated in certain regards.
And Joe, also, we should let those that have not been on the policy committee know that these are recommendations made by Strauss estimate. We have people review these as well, that this is their job to review policy and provide us input as to what is a good direction to go in. And then it's for us to decide if that's truly the direction we want to up, uphold. But it's, it's just important to know that it's not just, you know, going through policy, like, oh yeah, I think this is great. He's getting a recommendation off of what a professional has said and advised for our, us to do due to either a legal reason, um, changing, you know, things have changed legally in the world or, or something new has come about and is now a new legal direction as well. There's a, you know, Strauss estimate provides these updates to say, hey, this is something to be aware of. Please update your policy to be current, um, review it with your board to make sure that you all are in agreement that you want to provide this legal direction that we're advising you of.
Yeah, I just, I, there's 152 pages, so I scanned through most of them, but then I was like, there has to be a way to know.
That's why when you're like section this, I was like, you know, you tell me the page. Right here on my phone, like right next to me, so I would have it. And I'm like, hmm, I'm going to need to know.
Actually, I was handwriting page numbers on there before and I actually didn't do that this time, but they, they, I mean, they are, there are page numbers if you scroll down, the page will tell you. But no matter what, a lot of these policies are, i- if, if an option is given, sometimes it's already in existence anyway. And, and we don't need to reinvent the wheel when it comes to the options that are given. And then other times the board wants to do that. And, and again, I, I mean, I, I serve at the will of the board. It's, these are just my recommendations based on Strauss estimate's recommendation. So the board can say, well, we want to go in a different direction on a certain topic. I'm just saying, I, I don't really see any hot button issues here that, that really require significant discussion because we're talking about some new mandated policies, some wording changes. Uh, nothing, nothing earth shattering, at least not in my view, because when there is, I draw attention to that with the board and say, well, here's a policy that we might really want to not have on the books for whatever reason. Or here's the one that we really need to be mindful of right now, that sort of thing.
Thank you. Sorry. So that's good. Personnel, does anybody have any questions related to the personnel aspect of the agenda? Any questions in regards to letters A through F?
Are, are we going to be addressing that in um, any of this in executive session?
That, that wasn't the plan.
No, executive session is for district goal, the superintendent's evaluation.
Yeah, it just said, I don't, I had gone over and asked for a printout and I just have, all I got was the working session agenda. So even like, I, I don't have, um, you know, budget, I don't have the individual printed out. So I can't see them. That's why I was asking, is there anything? I know, I can't see it. So I'm kind of flying blind.
Well, perhaps between now and our meeting next week, we can work to get you that, the hard copies that you.
Yeah, that's what I will do. That's when I saw Karen today. That's what she kept saying. I said, well, unless we're doing it differently, that should be there. But I said, I'll get it before the next meeting. So that's all just that. It, like I say, it's flying blind for me, so.
Understood, understood.
Yeah.
And once you get it, then send it, you know, if you have any questions, send your questions in, you know. Um, does anybody have any questions in regard to the board liaison reports that Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Litwack and Ms. Tersus Killie may bring up? Did you want to hear about anything now? Did you want to wait to hear about it at the meeting on next week? It's totally up to the, to the board. I don't know if anybody has any updates. Uh, oh, sorry. Oh, also, I'll just go in order. Cameron, is there anything that you wanted to provide us during our work session in regards to your report for Riverside?
Uh, nope, nothing at this time, Marissa. Our meeting is tomorrow night. I think we have a pre-meeting at six or 6:30. So I'll have a more comprehensive report next Wednesday. If I'm able to attend, I will be in Louisville.
Oh, well, aren't you so fortunate. So, all right, all right.
For you.
Yeah, right.
You, you, hey Cameron, you going down to Kentucky to cut some of the bluegrass or what?
Um, nope, I'm going down to Kentucky to go to.
That's good. You can. I, it, it just went out with, to go to the.
The landscape and lawn convention at, in Louisville.
Okay, cool.
It makes total sense.
And you'll have a nice time.
I like it.
Nice, nice place.
Did you have anything, Harry, that you wanted to address?
Yeah, uh, the, yeah, just to remind, once again, all the school board members that we both have, uh, the end of October, the 26th, 27th, 28th, the school boards conference convention, uh, that's virtual. And that will be, you know, that's where we're all signed up for it. And we all should be taking advantage as best we can to help us understand what's going on and uh, find out, answer some of the questions that some of us may have about various topics. They have the, they made the programs to be like 30 minutes, 40 minutes. You know, they, they did it last year, worked out well. They're fine tuning it. Uh, also, uh, with just today, uh, I believe we were scheduled for December 14th for Burlington County, the next meeting at Medford Village, and it's moved to December 16th. And anybody on the board's invited to attend as well. So that is what I, what I have is liaising on with the School Boards Association. I, I did, I don't know, I guess I can bring it up here or bring it up under new business. But I saw in the paper, the township's synopsis of the 2020 Report of Audit of the Township of Delanco. And.
Might be a new business.
New business? Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, cool. Um, thank you though. Um, Catherine, did you have anything to report high level from the township committee?
Um, I, I don't need to go into detail about everything, but um, I did talk to Mr. Mercer, I was at last week. I've lost all track of time somehow, um, about the, uh, the township was awarded a grant. I should say that Shade Tree Commission Committee was awarded a grant to purchase approximately 250 trees for the town. And they proposed at the township meeting, um, giving some to the school to use. So I can let Joe talk about, uh, you know, his decision around that if he wants to, but um, it was just a nice gesture, I thought, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, on, on the lawns that we can't keep up cutting, we'll plan.
I suggested evergreens because they don't need as much maintenance.
So thank you, Catherine. I appreciate that you brought that to my attention. The last time these trees were offered, we had a number of trees offered a few years ago and we had to decline just because of a couple of factors, including our facilities team possibly not being able to keep up with maintenance of the trees. But uh, this time, you know, Stephen Burns, Tim Allen and I, we looked at it and we've decided to accept four trees. And I know that's a very modest amount, but four trees is better than zero trees. So we really appreciate the township and the Shade Tree Commission. Uh, and, and we're looking at beautifying the, this, one of the spaces at Walnut with, with those four trees. So thank you, Catherine.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay. And again, the agenda has things that we will discuss during that meeting, which would include old business, new business, the distributions, who would request public comment on a non-agenda item and go into executive session if necessary. So that is the draft for the October 20th agenda. Do we have anything in old business today off of workshop to discuss at this point in time?
Yes, I have a couple of things. So last, um, last meeting, I was talking about bullying and making sure every, every employee is on board and Mr. Mercer was saying, well, some, some employees are outsourced. So that's not our responsibility really to do the same level of in-service. So, and I think Mr. Mercer, you said you would talk to Mr. Heiser about the buses or something like that. And so the bus drivers would know about bullying, reporting. So did, were you able to do that?
So we do, we do um, have, bear some responsibility when it comes to anybody being informed of our policies and practices in relation to bullying. And that is correct. I mean, when it comes to training, uh, it, I, I, I would actually like for the outsourced companies to provide that training. So I did speak with Mr. Heiser and uh, they, they are, all staff members that work for school districts are trained in HIV, harassment, intimidation and bullying, uh, including our staff members. So, so are the Moorestown staff members. Uh, so, and that's something that I understand it's important for us to be aware of. It's important for staff members to know about that uh, there are steps that need to be taken when it comes to that topic. So I fully agree that it's important for everyone to be trained and to know what to do. At the same time, you know, the question is, who's responsible? I mean, I, I, I just don't see it being appropriate for Delanco to be training staff members that aren't ours. But if they're staff members of another district, they are already being trained.
Okay, just to follow up on that, um, I think I made the point last time that we all, we're still going to be held liable as a district. If something happens, even if it happens in the presence of an, of, of a person that we personally are not responsible for training. Is that a correct statement? Did you, do you understand what I mean?
Who are you asking, Vera?
Uh, Mr. Mercer, sorry. So if, if there's a bullying incident and it's very severe, it goes to say a lawsuit and it happened on a bus, our district will be held responsible, not the bus company, correct?
Well, I can't, there are legal questions like that. All I can say. Responsibility.
It, there would, I, I mean, every situation is different. I, I don't like making blanket statements. Um, it is very possible that the bus company would be sued. Actually, it's, it's probable that the bus company would sue. When people bring lawsuits, they sue everyone and their mother. Um, from the individuals to who those individuals are employed for. So they would probably sue a teacher involved, the superintendent, the bus driver, the bus driving company and the school district. And then through the course of the lawsuit, it would get vetted out who bears actual liability.
Okay, so I'll have to research to see if that's ever happened, if like an outsourced bus driver made the school district liable because they didn't know the procedures. I'll research that. So.
I'm sorry. Um, Ms. Garen's comment, our, our, the Jip would probably also, if there was fault on the bus company, we'd probably try to root the subrogation. And Ms. Garen, you could probably. And Ms. Garen, you could probably, as well, um, basically what that means is if we were sued and there was fault or. Uh, basically the fault was probably on a, on a company. Then the, our insurance would then basically, almost like countersue, as a way of saying, they basically go after the person who was at fault.
Okay, but the, the main point is we want to prevent all of this, not just the money side, but any suffering to the child who's really being bullied. So now, the, the next thing I want to ask is about, um, um, Mr. Burns, who are telling me about the student activity funds. Right now, we have around sixteen thousand and you, I think, I believe you said in the email that. The student advisors decide how to spend that money. So I was wondering, um. You know, when, when do they decide? Like, have the student advisors been told how much money? They can use this year and what is the procedure for that? Cause I'm totally unfamiliar with that procedure, spending the student activity fund money.
It's, the, the advisors pretty much had, you know, when they, when they, when they. I mean, this year, don't have, I mean, it's drama, drama's right. So drama, if they have a fundraiser, they'll input money and when they have to pay for something, they'll expend money.
So that sixteen thousand, that's all going to be used for drama this year then?
No, no, there's different bedders and these things. So each activity that we've had over the last. Over many years has a leg, there's a student council, um.
No, but I mean, right now we have sixteen thousand to spend, right?
No, the, the students have sixteen thousand to spend.
Okay, they have it. Okay, yeah, yeah, that's what I mean. That as a district, the students have that. And so what advisors are going to decide for this upcoming year? So the drama advisor would decide how to use part of that sixteen thousand, is that right?
Yeah, exactly.
And then what other, what other advisors do we have? Like, we got the drama advisor and who else?
I don't know that answer, but if it's.
We, we have, we have one extracurricular activity this year. We have a drama club.
So we got all that sixteen thousand, that advisor will decide how to spend that sixteen thousand?
No, that, no, no, there are, Stephen just said that the money is divided into different accounts. So for example, I, I don't know the number. But the drama account might have four hundred dollars in it. So the advisor would then determine how to spend that four hundred dollars. Based on what the students in the drama club need. And if they do fundraisers, then they might have four hundred more dollars. And then the drama club advisor would determine how to spend that money.
So I'm just trying to ask a very simple question. How is that sixteen thousand that we, that the students now have? How is that being divvied up for this coming year?
Did you ever have an account for a child, Vera?
No, I just want to ask about the school, so.
Yeah, but that's it. It's the same concept. That you don't have to spend the money because it's in the account.
So could, so since we have that sixteen thousand, couldn't we?
We don't, the students.
Since the students have it and we oversee that money, how is that money going to be used? Does anyone have an idea?
It would be rolled over, right?
But that, what happens is the money stays in the account and it's used in the future. So for example, there's a chorus account. There's a band account, there's a drama account and so on and so forth.
So none of that can be used right now, except maybe for drama, because we don't have those extracurriculars right now.
But it could be used for band or chorus as well, because even though that's not a stipend position, we have a music teacher that is. Doing, uh, definitely doing band and we're talking about adding chorus at some point.
Okay, so is this money that was, okay, I, I, I want to ask my last question now. So last meeting. Uh, um, a board event member asked a question, I believe it was Vince. And I think Marissa or Mr. Mersinger said they did not have an answer at that time, or they were not prepared to answer. I would have to look at the video for the exact wording, but it's been weeks since then. And I, so I'm going to ask the question again now and maybe you found the answer since it was asked weeks ago, which is. How, what is the hourly fee for our lawyer at these meetings? What is her hourly fee? So you still don't have that?
I feel like, I feel like we just took a, a really sharp left turn from student activities to talking about the, the hourly fee.
Okay, so I guess, I guess you don't have that. Um, this was a question from the last.
It feels like a non sequitur to me and, and the nonsense.
I don't have to speak in sequence. All I have to do is have topics that are old business. And since this was carried over from the other meeting, I'm asking it now, but I think you don't have an answer. Would you have an answer by the next meeting?
I, I don't even remember responding to this question.
I'm sorry, what's that, Joe?
I don't even recall responding to that question.
I can look in the video. I think it was Marissa who said, I'm not prepared to answer it.
I said, I think, well, I mean, I personally am not prepared to answer that, absolutely not. And I think that that's something that could be brought up in an email. It doesn't necessarily have to be brought up during the public session. I think that maybe that's probably the best way to respond.
I think the public should know because that's their money. So, okay, I'll, I'll bring it up in an email. I'll, I'll ask it in an email and I'll inform the public during a meeting.
Well, here's what can happen, because Stephen Burns is the, Stephen Burns is the business administrator. The one that is more privy to all the bills than anybody else in the district. He can look at the bills, he can share the information with the full board via email and that'll be that. I just, I'm sorry, but I thought we were talking about student activities and then suddenly we weren't anymore.
It, the topic is old business. It's not just student.
You're, you're trying to control the agenda, which is a problem, which is one of the reasons.
Procedure, but now I will leave it to you.
Have a lawyer present because of some of the difficulties that individual board members were presenting, Vera.
Okay.
You know, it's like a catch twenty-two that you don't realize, but you're providing.
I'm personally against having the lawyer here and using that money. I would like to use that for.
Yeah, but because of your behavior, it's part of the reason we have to have the lawyer here.
Nobody has, nobody has made ethics complaint against me and if.
Because that would also incur additional legal fees and additional time.
No, we wouldn't. I made.
That says, that is unfortunately not accurate. That is unfortunately not accurate. But either, either way, um, Stephen, at nine P M, Vince Callagwire left the meeting. If you could please note that.
And then July twenty twenty-one, Vera, I know. I received this other board member.
It was absolutely.
To the members of New Jersey School.
Totally different situation, Vera, when it's against a board member by a board member.
But the board has to have legal representation.
Yes, can I just clarify really? Uh, to help, uh, and I don't know, we, we do have different hourly rates. If I knew what our hourly rate was off the top of my head, I would gladly share it. But I actually don't know Delanco's rate. The, um, an ethics complaint is a legal process. Um, what Ms. Darmo filed was a general complaint. Um, it was not. Um, in the form of a formal ethics complaint. It, it was more like a, a letter with a list of issues attached to it. That was referred to the executive county superintendent and addressed at that level. An ethics complaint, you don't have to be a lawyer to address one. Many boards of education will use their lawyers to do it. Anyone can file an ethics complaint. It looks a lot like, um, uh, complaint in my world is a legal term of art. It has a specific form and a very specific look to it. It looks like a lawsuit. You write it up, you serve it on everyone and it follows legal process. That is an ethics complaint. It does incur, boards do incur costs when you go through it, because even if you don't use your attorney to write it. You use your attorney to defend it. So I just wanted to offer that as a good clarification. Perhaps move this conversation forward.
Okay, let's move on.
Thank you. Yep. Okay, anybody else have anything for old business?
I have something for old business, Marissa.
Yeah, I just.
Wait, wait, sorry, Phil started first.
Okay, my thing for old business is, when are we going to go back to a live meeting? When are we going to have an in-person's meeting? I think that's extremely important. I think, you know. We, we can't do this Zoom meeting. Sure, everybody loves Zoom meetings, but we need to meet in public.
I think we mentioned at the last meeting, we were going to reevaluate this in November. Um, to, to have another discussion about this because it was enabling Stephen to notify and provide. Notice, um, both written and electronically in the proper timeframe to do so. And he was going to do it in a financially savvy way. And we said we would revisit this in November. And originally, the reason why we went virtual as opposed to in-person. Just as a quick backstory was a tech, technology issue. Um, so many in the public wish that we could livestream and have everything, basically have it as if it were. A Zoom meeting, but have us in person. And currently, we don't have the capability to do that. We had the professionals. Come in and provide us some input on that. And at this point in time, they just said that we don't have the, the technology to. Have what we, what it seems everybody would want, which is their cake and eat it too. Everybody wants it all. Um, so if we were to go in that fashion, it would be a more restricted type event. Perhaps the live streaming aspect would not be available. It could be an in-person meeting with maybe a recording that would then later be posted. But again, these were discussions that we had at the previous meeting and that we can absolutely have again. To decide on how we want to proceed forward, because I agree with you, Phil. I, I love the in-person, um, aspect of it. I think that there's great value in it. And, um, if we can find a way to keep everybody happy and, and, and make it happen, then yeah. I, I'd love to do it, but right now, because of the audio component of this, um. It doesn't allow us to have it the way that the majority would prefer it to be. And that includes those in the community as well. So we're trying to find ways to keep everybody happy and everybody informed. Unfortunately, when we do that, there are some parties that don't necessarily agree. And I totally understand that as well. Because like I said, I, I agree. I, I was always saying all along that I wanted to be in person. I think that there's great value in it. But I also understand that if we want to keep the fashion that we're going in right now, we don't have the technology to support it.
And I understand that, you know, we did have a good relationship with Moorestown until we lost that. And I'm sure Moorestown would have helped us out. But I do think it's something that we have to seriously get back to. That's my two cents on that. Thank you.
We think.
Uh, Phil, Phil, we still do have the Moorestown tech team working with us.
Oh, we do? I didn't realize.
Albert, Albert is a member of the Moorestown tech team and they still work with us. It's just, they, they know that we don't have the equipment that would be necessary. Or even the manpower that would be necessary when it comes to setup, breaking it down. And making sure that it's all done in a timely fashion in a, in the school, when the space is already being used by the students. Uh, staff members and so on. So it's, it's, it was a logistical issue, a financial issue. There were a number of things that the Moorestown team cited for us.
Okay.
Absolutely revisit it. We can revisit that in November like we had planned. I think that's a great opportunity.
Old, old business, if. By May, that was actually brought up by Vera, uh, last time. And I just wanted to thank Mr. Dovey and especially Mr. Dovey's wife for, for working, um, as a teaching assistant. Especially during this time that a lot of people aren't. And I'm glad that both he and his wife were. Promoting education and, and serving the communities. So thank you. And, and please thank your wife as well.
Exactly, yes, please.
Um, I was hoping to revisit the topic of, um. Like building our relationship with the township committee, uh, through Stephen Burns. I know that we've brought that up before, so I'm hoping this is a good time to chat about that again.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I guess more generally, uh, we haven't had a very good relationship with them in the past. And I would love to do whatever we can to open up lines of communication so that they understand some of the issues that we're having with the budget. Um, I know there's going to be a new crop of, uh, or potentially, I should say, a new crop of, uh, members joining in January. Um, so I just wanted to kind of get that on, you know, Stephen's radar, um, Mr. Mersinger's radar. Uh, to make sure that, you know, in the next several months, we kind of get a plan in place, hopefully.
And, um, well, I'll wait for new, new business for the other aspect of it. I didn't know if there's anything else you wanted to discuss in that regard.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm happy to continue to be the liaison to the township. I feel like I'm probably a bit of a poster child. When it comes to that relationship for, um, negative memories, feelings. Um, with the township committee, so I don't know how far I will get with, uh, trying to persuade them to our. To, uh, improve our relationship, but, um, if there is anybody else who's willing to step up as the committee liaison. Um, I'd be happy to have you take a stab at it.
Hey Catherine, with all due respect, your opinion of yourself, I, I don't, I disagree. I think that you've done a great job as the liaison with the township. And I, I would say that if there's any negativity, it is certainly not you at the center of it or you causing any of it. So I mean, that's, that's just my perception of it. I, I, I guess everybody's own self-perception is different, right? You know, if you look at yourself as liaison and say, well, there, there's controversy surrounding me as a person, maybe it's not you. You know, maybe there are other forces at work here when it comes to the interactions with the township. Uh, with various aspects of things that we've, we've talked to the township about, whether it's the library or other topics. I don't think that it relates to you as much as, that there, there could have been difficulties with the relationship with the township. As you've said, long before I arrived, uh, you know, since the time of Joe Miller, since the time of other, other administrators that were here. So, I mean, I've heard the stories. I didn't live it, you know, so, and this is not, I'm not assigning blame to anyone. I'm just saying that maybe you're being too hard on yourself and that I don't think, I don't think that you're really at the center of it. I think that you're, you're doing a great job.
Yeah, and I would, I would echo what Joe was saying. And, um, of course, I support, you know, whatever choice that you're looking to. From this, but, um, again, I, I echo what Joe says and I believe that you've been a phenomenal liaison and have given us great input from. Your perspective, and I think that that is invaluable. And I think that there's nothing wrong with how you perceive the information you're. You're being, you're listening to. And I, you know, I, I think it's great that you're able to bring it back to us and to provide us that insight. I think that we've probably received more insight from you being a liaison than we've received in many years past. So I, I, you know, it's a great, it's a great thing. And, um, I, I really appreciate you doing that. And I know it's not always an easy thing to do, as with anything else that we do as a volunteer and put our time into, but it's greatly appreciated for sure.
I'll just make.
Very definitely, I think. Doing it, Kat, I do have a question for you. Is the township planning on going back to in-person meetings anytime soon?
No.
I'll make the comment that I've never heard any bad stories about the school and the township committee. And I'm very grateful for the high quality of leadership that we have at the township committee. That's my comment.
Well, I think that you've done a great job, Catherine, and, you know, at least complete the year. And then reevaluate, you know what I'm saying? We all have our assigned duties and it just makes it easier. When we, you know, we'll have new board members as well and then we'll have the reorganization in January. And then at that point, if you're not comfortable, then, you know, maybe opt out. That, that's what I would suggest. So that. You know, because if someone else steps in now, they're not going to be affected. And our job isn't necessarily. Our job is, once again, I'm going to keep reasserting it, is to benefit the students. The students, we're not elected to the township. We have a different agenda. And, um, it'll, I don't know if there's any other old business, but it kind of leads into the new business. So I'll just stop now. If there's any other new business or old business, I'm sorry.
I, I do not have any other old business, but Catherine.
I'll lead in.
I guess I'm just curious, kind of what Stephen feels his timeframe is for, uh.
Vera.
When he feels like he'll be able to reach out.
Wait, Harry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, because both you are talking on top of each other. Harry, Karen was finishing. And, and she was speaking to Stephen, so I just wanted to give her the opportunity, because when the both of you speak, it, it breaks.
Sure, sure.
Cool.
Yeah, I mean, the, the first part of that was just more about when, uh, I don't know what I'm hoping to get out of this, other than to say. That I would, you know, I would love to see some sort of plan in place to make sure that we open lines of communication, especially before both. Groups start discussing budgets for next year, so, um. I don't know. Stephen, what are your feelings about that? I know you've just gotten on the job and you have a lot on your plate, so I'm, I'm well aware of that. I'm not expecting you to call them tomorrow, but.
Because I only work three days a week too, so I mean, it's, it's not, I, I.
I I feel.
Do you speak a little louder, Steve?
Yeah, I.
Steve, you're away from the mic.
I feel like you're working three days a week and being new to the position here. I I don't know. I don't have an answer for that, but obviously, when whenever we can utilize them, I would expect to utilize them. So when Harry brings up the fact that having a shared service, I'll I'll reach out to them. I don't see why I wouldn't. So. I mean, I I have no problem reaching out to them. Those kind of things.
I mean, I think what what what? Just based on conversations I've had with them in the past, what what everybody's kind of hoping for is just an introduction. Like, hey, I'm Steve Burns. That's how you reach me. Um, you know, this is what my job is. I don't know, something like that. So that they like at least have a context, because very often they're having conversations. Um, where I think they would like to have potentially your input. Uh, but they they don't know who you are or like how to contact you. So then we, you know, like, and I'm not somebody that they want to talk to necessarily all the time. So um, so I think it would just be helpful if if maybe you just said, hey, I'm the new BA for the school board. Uh, let me know if I can ever.
Yeah, I don't have a problem doing that, but on the flip side, I don't know who they are either.
Yeah.
I I don't, and that wasn't anything personal. I've been saying I don't know who they are. Uh, I'm not even sure who I'm reaching out to, to be honest.
Here's a thought, uh, maybe Joe, if this is something you're comfortable with doing. Would you be willing to extend the, hey, we have a new business administrator? We wanted to introduce him to you, just kind of like send an email to the township committee. Uh, you know, it's informal, but that way too, it doesn't take from Steven's time. But at the same time, the township is getting that initial introduction as to who Steven is and how he's supporting us as a school board and a district. I think that would be, um, it would be a nice, it's like an olive branch and but yet at the same time, it's a it's a limited olive branch. You know, it's nothing too crazy. I don't know if that's something you're. You feel comfortable doing or that you'd even, you know, you have time to do, but.
I'm I'm a hundred percent comfortable with that. I can absolutely do that and. I just wanted Steven to have a chance to get his bearings in the district. He's now been with us for a few months. So I think it's, you know, it is time to to start having that conversation with the township committee. But again, I feel like. Like we were saying earlier, I I think there's that there have been miscommunications or misunderstandings in both directions. I, you know, I think that it's important for us to understand how our budget works, understand how their budget works and so on and so forth, because. That's what I think that there there is misunderstanding related to that, related to taxation, really. You know, and I know Bob Dovey is very experienced as a as a former township committee member. So. I don't think that there's really any. Um, I wouldn't even call it negativity or animosity. I just think that we we are kind of in a state of misunderstanding when it comes to certain aspects. Of taxation and budgeting and other topics like that. And I think maybe uh Catherine is correct that. Steve Burns could be uh somebody that that helps to provide, sorry, helps to provide some clarity in that area.
Catherine, I'd be happy to work with you um in setting this up. Right now. Township committee is in the midst of their budget discussions for next year. So that's going on now and we'll go on. Probably till after the first of the year, they start to finalize stuff. But um I'd be happy to work with you. Uh, but I think you you've done a good job in trying to reach out and trying to, you know, trying to. Open the lines of communication and uh would encourage you to continue to do that, but I'd be be happy to work with you.
Thank you.
But I think though, um, Bob, you know, just I actually appreciate that a hundred percent because you're a former township committee member. And I could spearhead this by at least just sending a message and say, you know, not only Steve Burns, but we have a few board members. You know, for example, Marissa, Bob and and Catherine, who would like to meet and discuss topics related to. Budgets, taxation, et cetera, just so that we're all on the same page. And 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 again, like Catherine's saying, just an introduction of our new business administrator. Uh, this is my fourth business administrator in eight. So absolutely, I think that's important.
Yeah, I think that's great. I think that would be a great starting point. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, and then into new business. Um, I know Harry had brought up in an email about board docs. Is that something you wanted to discuss a bit more, Harry?
Yeah, but. I'd like to hold that and just continue with, because it's right on the same wavelength we're talking about now, the relationship. Between the township and the school board and the relationship between budgets between for both of them. And working in a cooperative way because they're the same taxpayers. They're no different people. That are represented by both the school board and by the township council. And I saw it was in September twenty ninth paper, the synopsis of. The twenty twenty report of the audit of the township of Delanco. And when I read through it, I see where they have. And it it was actually Janice Lor's side off of it. So I, you know, doing. My due diligence in a way that I believe I'm supposed to. I contacted Steve Burns. And Steve gave me a reply and I said, well, I'm going to ask the township because my question. I wasn't thinking we didn't get money from them. The question is how they use the money that they're owed. From us, you know, we're 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 getting money. It's a liability on is how they account for it. There was a deferred liability of local district school taxes of one million. Four hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-four cents as of December thirty first, twenty twenty. And once again, that same amount that was from the previous year. So when I look at it, it looks to me like it's a. A line item, not a, you know, that it's not in the regular budget. So I. And what does it mean? And I think that's something that needs to be explained. The entire board because I called Janice Lor, who said, you know, I just signed off on it. I said, fine. She put me in touch with Bob Hudnell. I don't know if anyone knows who he who he is, but the last twenty-three years been the CFO. Uh, for the township and he explained somewhat. And um at some point, it was that it was a problem because it was from thirty years ago with Florio. And then uh I still wasn't quite understanding or satisfied with the explanation. So he put me in touch with Richard Schwab, who said, oh, it has to do with. From twenty years ago when McGreevy was the, so I'm not sure. And he said, oh, this is how we've always been doing it. But what does it mean? For us as a school board, because. If there, this is the liability because we have our our budget year runs from, you know. July first to June thirtieth and. And the township budget is from January first to December thirty first. And a couple of years ago, the then mayor. Can you hear me? Because it's coming on my thing. The then mayor came in to the. School board meeting, giving us all our individual, you know. Printed out the budget for the, uh, you know, for the township and that we, you know, we don't know what we're doing. We're, you know, we're not, and. This is part of, as it goes back and how it affects us, how it affects the school board. Is that it's part of the the thirty-year. Pilot program that the school board will never see profits from. And at time when there was a meeting, a sit-down meeting. It was after the fact, after the shovels were already in the ground, you know, the ink had dried, but for the next thirty years. We have a budget problem that we didn't create, but we have to live with. And likewise. You know, the township has to act accordingly about low-income housing, fine, and they they solve. A problem for them, but created a greater problem for us and a real problem for us. And it needs to be understood. So I suggest we ask either the mayor, the current mayor. Or uh Richard Schwab, the town manager. Explain it to all of us at once, because I would like to explain it to you, but it sounded like it was kind of a. Circular argument of a dog chasing its tail, that it we've always done it that way and blah, 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 but. That money, it is basically the way it was explained was, you know, that's. That's why I asked earlier, the billing, is it every month? Is it every, you know, it's on their books as a liability. And what does that mean? What does that mean? What they can do with that money is they use that to. Do kind of deals that are in effect, causing us financial difficulties on the school board. Either, you know, I mean, I don't think it's with intent, but it's certainly is what's coming about from those decisions. And we should understand it. So Vera, maybe you should, you know, if you want to go into accounting and, you know. Um, testing the, you know, legal and. The uh accounting systems, you might want to focus on that. You're saying that everything is hunky-dory with the city. Um, it affects the municipal budget, affects the school budget. And likewise, once again, the same company that had a thirty-year. Pilot with us, had a thirty-year pilot with Evesham, and when the board brought it to the attention. Of how it affected them, the Evesham Municipal Government worked with them and made adjustments. That did not happen here. Just the opposite. Where we're sole A is your budget solved the problem.
Okay, since you brought my name up. I'll just say something since you brought my name up. The money they get from that pilot, they put into the town. For whatever expenses they have. They give us that money. They still have their expense. They still need my tax money. So, so it 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 doesn't make sense to me to say, oh, we should get that money. They use that money for what we need for the town. If they don't have that money, my taxes still have to go up to pay whatever deficit there is. So. If we need money, if we need money, we got to raise taxes. I'm trying to see, like you, where we can save it and put the most that we can into education.
Do you understand that we're capped? What is it, four percent now? They they doubled it last year that we go to four? You know, Vera, do you understand that for thirty years? There is no, any, any child that goes into. In those sixty-four units. That comes into our school system isn't necessarily taxed. We don't get anything from it. It costs us. Special Ed, we have students that live there. We've never seen.
It had to be a pilot for what I understand. I didn't understand this before.
Not not just the taxpayers, the students. It's not like a. You know, you wouldn't believe, be what you want to believe, Vera.
If we need more money, we could go to the taxpayers if we wanted to have a higher budget, correct, Mr. Mersinger? Could we go to the taxpayers if we wanted more money above the cap?
Yes, we could have the community vote on the the um the budget. That has not been done for a number of years. Uh, and historically, in many districts, but budgets had been voted down. Uh, we would prefer that not to happen. Uh, so we stay within the cap. Uh, we also. Have enrollment adjustments. We have healthcare adjustments. We have bank cap, et cetera, et cetera. We have certain things that will add to that amount. Um, but uh, so we can go above two percent based on certain adjustments, but uh, other than that. We would need to put it to a vote to the community.
Okay, so.
Said Vera, you don't want to pay more taxes. So you're on the board saying, I don't want to pay more taxes.
I'm trying to use.
It's okay if.
Actually, I'm trying to, I'm trying to do things. Well, I don't even want to unveil my plans yet because they haven't.
Nine-member board, Vera.
Should I tell my secret? Okay, I'll tell my secret, but I'm not working.
We can't even see you on the screen.
Let me tell you to listen. If you listen, you'll know. I I care about the tough times that people are going through now. I don't think they would vote to have the taxes go up. And I care about the kids, so I'm working with Pastor Waleska Trinidad. Through the Dobbins Church and we're trying to get a volunteer tutoring center going as we speak. I am doing this with the pastor and with the help of the trustees. I have a meeting with her Friday. And I haven't talked about it because I'm doing it as a resident. I'm just mentioning it now because.
Board, you can't do this.
Can't do that as a resident. I can.
It's a facetious distinction that you're making.
And I am doing that.
Something that's, that's great. It could be happening. That's great. That's wonderful. But that has nothing to do with school board issues.
I'm only bringing it up because money is tight. Uh, the budget voters won't vote to raise taxes, I don't think. And I am doing something.
Yeah, but do you understand why the budget is tight? Do you understand that the that what you're saying, oh, it's great. Coming to the school board. The the forty thousand, sixty thousand, a hundred thousand dollars that we're putting out for special ed kids, we're not even seeing. But it's only for the next twenty-eight years, I guess now.
Hey, Harry, in your. Harry, with what you were saying, uh, myself and I believe it was Marissa and also Vince did have a meeting. With the deputy mayor and the mayor a couple of years ago, and we brought up some of the same things that you were bringing up right now. And unfortunately, the township didn't have any money to help us at that time.
Yeah, they they have a almost a million and a half liability that is that comes from the schools. That's what they're trading.
Harry, that's, they collect the tax money for all the entities. So the money that's owed to the schools is considered a liability against the revenues that they're collecting, the tax revenues. So that's where you, that's where the the liability comes in. So it's a liability because they owe the schools that money. That they've collected on you, on our behalf.
Yeah, and because the budgets aren't aligned. You know, by time it presents, you know.
Yeah, there was, there was a.
This this goes back five, six years, I think at one.
No, it actually goes back.
No, 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 where. Yeah, I know, but I'm saying where the school board acted, the I I believe was asked by the township. Instead of going for the two percent that we should have, oh, only go for one or zero. At first, I wanted zero. I think they. We we compromise with one, you know, there's been compromise on our end over the years, but. You know, it it turns around. This is what happened and. That's what I, it needs to be looked at, just. Paving over the problem without seeing the pothole out there, it'll come back. But it's only twenty-eight years.
I I think if maybe I'm. I think if we have some discussions. Pro, you know, in, I say privately, in a small group that's, you know, uh, not. Well, we 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 can open up some. No, 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 it that because that's not going to get anything. That's not going to get us anything. So, uh, you know, I would say after the after the election uh in November. You know, I I think at that time is, that's when we should sit down with Richard. Uh, with uh Bob, who's their uh CFO and um. You know, perhaps Steve and uh Joe. I I think we could probably sit down and just talk about. Our individual uh situations so that we can see, perhaps they may have some ideas for us. We can have suggestions, you know, back and forth to try and work this out because. They do know that the schools affect the value of the town. You know, real estate-wise, uh. You know, real estate wise, uh, quality, you know, wise as far as the type of state, you know, uh, citizens that we have. So I, 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 I think, you know, sitting down and having that kind of a conversation and hopefully. We'll understand what their issues are, uh, we can ask the questions like, hey, can you change, you know, you have pilots. Can you change the distribution, you know, uh, of, of how that money is, is given to the township? Uh, you know, where we would get a portion of, of a, you know, perhaps some of the pilots. And I think right now there's probably three or four pilots. Two of them have to do with the, um, affordable housing and the, uh, mansion. Uh, project and, you know, those, you know, there are no, uh, well. There are no school kids coming out of the mansions, I don't believe there, uh, at this time, there are that come out of the, uh, the crossings. Uh, and you, you know, I think if they understand the impact, and I know Phil has worked. Last couple of years very hard trying to get people to understand the impact that that had on our budget. And on our schools and, you know, so hopefully we can work together. Uh, you know, and, and solve the problem that, that we're both facing. I say both the school board and the, uh, and the township committee, and I think the members there that are there now. And the ones that are running, I, I, I think they, they all feel that they would like to see. You know, this, this financial problem the schools are having solved, so. That's my, that's my two cents for the message.
That's for sure, it's everyone's.
We appreciate it.
And, and maybe start with them cutting the grass, you know. You don't have to cost this money to have a saved one.
Well, they're, they're, they're some of the. That's some of the discussions we can have.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know.
Where they can help us, uh, maybe we can help them, you know, so I.
Yeah, that's how it's supposed to work in the community, and we have a superintendent who's represents. To us and we have our, you know, business administrator. And, you know, we, unfortunately, we did have a meeting like that, but it was an after the fact meeting. Yeah, that is like, you know, it's like telling you, the, here, you're going to have this problem for the next thirty years, so.
Well, what I, what I see right now with Stephen, Stephen has impressed me with. It, the way he's, he's developing, uh, budget, our budget, uh, looking to the future, laying things out. Um, making, trying to make sure we understand the process and are thinking, you know, of. Different scenarios, I think he's done an excellent job. I think part of that. Uh, that would be something the township committee, uh, would probably be impressed with also. And, uh, uh, yeah, so I, you know, like I said, I, I just think if we can sit down and talk. In a, um, in an adult manner, if you will, we, I, I think, oh, you know. So we can probably resolve some of the issues that are confronting us right now, so.
I agree. And I, I, that would be great, that's how we're supposed to operate and I can't say it. Any more times, but I'll keep saying it many more times. It's the same taxpayers. It's the, you know, it's not a different group of people and the people moving into the senior development that, um. I ran in actually yesterday and, and on my bike ride into Fernallet and, um. He, you know, I asked him about it, he said, well, it's, and I ride, I see there was houses are being occupied, there's, um. And he said it's a own, and under contract about, he said it was about sixty percent, but there had been at that meeting I'm talking about. Projected numbers and then how that would be, have gone away by now, which it hasn't because those were supposed to all have been sold by now. And just for people's understanding, the market has increased twelve to fourteen percent at least. But what they were projecting those homes were going, would go for, they're going for more now and. Realistically, the people that move there. Already raised their children, paid school taxes somewhere else. That's not what they're hoping to accomplish by living here, they're. Going to keep their taxes as low as possible, but they wouldn't have moved here unless they could have afforded. A three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, but you have a population of. Uh, Kat and Steve and, um. Cameron that plan on living, raising their families here, and they need, and they deserve a top light school. System and we need to make improvements, we all know that. So that, that's where, where, how I look at the big picture of it. That if we all could work together, it does save taxpayer. Your money and it doesn't, you know, you can rob from Peter to pay Paul, but you still end up. And if we have to raise taxes in the town, if the town says, hey, we have to raise taxes, so that we can have more money for our schools. There's all kinds of ways, if there's a political will, to accomplish things, so. I think we're on a, a much better course. And I think, you know, even as we're moving forward in this process of having. Board of the whole where our communication is much more. Adult, much more, uh, practical, myself as well. Because it's, you know, we have to have a format that we can all relate to and accomplish what we're trying to achieve, which is once again. The improvement of learning and academics and in this day and age, because of the pandemic, the emotional, social. Growth and development of the children, you know, that's the adults in town, you know, since I've been here twenty years. There's, you know, we have a new administration building, it much needed. And the police, you know, and we have the town looks better than it ever has. So we're in the right direction, but now it's time to turn not just the attention, but the resources. To the schools, to the children, to build what needs to be done for those who are going to have children and want to raise them in this community.
What is it that you wanted to discuss in regards to board docs?
Yeah, thank you. That was the, um, the New Jersey School Boards Association. Uh, at their last meeting introduced this board doc. And would it, uh, all I wanted us to do is look in to see if that would make sense for us to get it's. It's a way of, once it's set up, that the, um, um, like chain of command of communication is automatically. You know, puts people, they're able to reach certain information, they're not able to reach cer- certain information. And it was very impressive and as most of you know, I'm not that versed with the technology. And I could understand the concept of why it would be useful, but I do not know the cost, it's a private company apparently. But going through the School Boards Association, I'm sure it's discounted somehow, but it may be out of our reach because. Uh, I think Joe said we'll use, now it doesn't cost us anything. But that i- i- if I'm not mistaken, doesn't that, isn't that reliant ba- pretty much on you providing that information, Joe?
Well, it's, it's a, it's Google Drive, comes at no cost to the district. Uh, we have Google-based email for board members. Uh, the drive includes all sorts of documents related to the board meetings. Steve. Is, uh, very adept at keeping them organized as well, so. As much as I like the idea of board docs, I would prefer not to spend money on something that we can do for free.
Uh, I understand that concept, but I also understand the long-term concept, once it's set up, and it may be out of our price range, but.
Costs, uh, costs is.
Thirty-seven thousand dollars to cut grass is, you know, is something that, uh. I mean, that's what I compare it to, where, where does it get spent, administration, students, et cetera. It's, it's just to look into it, I don't know. I don't know what else they can provide and. It may be some of the technology that we're looking for, they might be able to provide. So I, I don't know, I just think you should look into it with that.
Costs is between twenty-seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars, depending on what version you would want.
One-time fee or yearly?
No, yearly.
You said, how much, twenty-seven hundred?
Twenty-seven hundred to eleven thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I like free a lot better.
Yeah, 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 to accomplish same thing, but, you know, that. Where did you get that from, Steve?
From board docs, I emailed the person on your email.
Okay, good. I'm just assuming we would be on the low end at the eleven thousand or pre, really big districts, et cetera.
Depends on the level of service, so it depends on what you're looking for.
Yeah, yeah.
It depends on the size of the district because in reality, it's what you're asking them to do for you. So for example, I had a personnel issue, I was able to go to someone, some district's website and search your board, board agendas for the last five, six years. In the matter of, an instant. So there's, so my point being is they may have paid eleven thousand dollars for that kind of service. I, I don't know what levels are the service.
Yeah, to put it all, to put everything, yeah. That's what I say, it seemed like, when I could tell, once that was set up. That all the information was right there and to be manipulated very quickly and consistently and that information. Would, you know, you'd have different levels of what board information the board gets, what the principals get, with the teachers, with the community. Et cetera, that I'm assuming now, Joe, that it's done by you just personally, correct?
Right now, it's, and it's me and Steve Burns. Prior to that, it was Vicky and me, James and me, Joanne and me. They also have, of course, support and assistance, uh, from Karen Hosier and now Eileen Grin. Prior to that, Nancy Fox, you know, so it's, it's a team effort in the board office. To keep the files organized and, uh, I think we do well with it and again, it's free.
Yeah, no, fine, it's just, like I say, once, from. My understanding, it seemed once that's in there, once it's organized and the data is in there, that it would be helpful. For our district going forward, and if we can't afford it now, we can't afford it now, but to know that it exists. And what, you know, what it does for twenty-seven hundred or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up as something that I'd come across and I had, you know, went through the channels and. Joe said, hey, it's good for new, new business, so.
Very much.
That's it, that's my new business.
Awesome, thank you. All right, if there's nothing further, I will open this up for public comment on non-agenda items. I do have one to read. Um. The, um, online form and this one is from a Mr. Chris Wallace. Um, he's a Delight resident and he would like, uh, some clarification. A few meetings ago, the board stated that they would meet in person for one of the two meetings per month. This sounded as though it would be for the student recognition awards, then the board decided to stay virtual for both meetings because some members did not want to be in attendance. In attendance to a meeting to honor students that this board is supposed to be best, to do the best for. So no once a month meeting to honor the students, but it was approved to have a book fair on a weeknight. How is it safe to invite people to the book fair in our school but not to have them celebrate student achievement, achievements? Sounds like the board is now choosing and picking instead of having a set of rules to follow. Make up your minds, if you, if these board members rather stay home, then please have them resign. They serve no purpose other than their own. We appreciate that, I'm hoping that my, um, explanation earlier helped provide a bit of clarification there. Um, does anybody else have any additional comments?
Well, Marissa, it's important to point out too that the, the PTO book fair is a PTO event. They utilize the building for that, that is approved by our director facilities, it's reviewed by the business administrator and myself. That, that is not the same as the board conducting a meeting, uh, and so everything is looked at on a case-by-case basis.
Understood, thank you. Does anybody else have a public comment on a non-agenda item? I know that Ms. Mater had her hand up for very, very long, I know that it's no longer up, but I didn't know what she had to speak about was still something on her mind.
First of all, I'm sorry, I didn't even realize it was up still, I just let notice that it was there and I had.
Who's speaking, who's speaking? Please identify yourself.
I'm Dana Mater and I'm not turning my camera on because I'm in my pajamas, so sorry.
No worries.
Comment was on an agenda that had to do with, um, the custodial staff, so I don't know if that's time for me to comment now.
Yeah, you can bring it up now.
I, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, I got to sit in on a meeting, um, yesterday and talked about the, um, SR funds with. Um, Mr. Mersinger and the other DTEA members and Mr. Burns. He was very thorough, it was a very informative meeting and we were very glad to be part of it. Um, I will say, you know, about this other custodian that is going to be, um, or, you know, that was an idea. Um, Miss, Mr. Allen is doing a fantastic job and he's working hard, but I also have to give some credit to Mrs. Best, Miss Best. Because she is doing three jobs for some people too and, um, just speaking as a walnut teacher. Um, we desperately need the help at Walnut, we do not have a full-time custodian there all day. Um, like I had a mop and spill in my classroom the other day, you know, myself in the middle of class and I had to stop, you know, my class to take care of that, so. You know, I think that this extra part-time person will help all around. Um, I don't think it's just going to be somebody to help mow the lawn, I think it's going to be someone who will help Tammy, who's doing four lunches by herself. She's cleaning up the lunches, you know, um, somebody to be there at Walnut, maybe a little bit more to help. You know, with the COVID issues or with just the custodial tasks that need to be done, so. I just wanted to put my input to the board about, just from a teacher's perspective on what. Uh, we think and feel and how it would really benefit us and help us. Um, because it does take away when I have to, you know, go and mop when there's a spill or. Brenda will have to come down and bring paper towels for something, she, she's not at the office at that point, so. Just hopefully this would help with that situation. Um, so that was just my comment about that, and then I did just want to comment, um, about something was Vera, Mrs. Dharma was talking about. The reading lo- the reading levels for Fontis and Penel. So speaking as an ELA teacher in the middle school and, um. Using Fontis Penon, uh, the last couple of years, um, one of the main things that the program actually does state. Is that is detrimental to the student and their families to share their actual reading level with the families. Um, it, you know, that the program is very big on trying to get them to be, um. You know, their self-esteem and interested in reading, so, you know, one of the things that we do is. We won't share exactly the level with the students because we don't want the kids to feel bad that they're on a level M. In seventh grade, you know, we would just share some of the actual specifics that we're seeing. That they're, they're struggling with, so I just wanted to share as to, you know, these things are shared with parents when they need to be shared, but. You know, it's not, it's, it's a fine line, we, we, we want to instill that love of reading and that self-esteem and that choice of reading. So when they hear that they have to pick from a, a letter M, you know, whether their classmates are choosing from a V. It kind of really kills their mood of wanting to read in the classroom, so, um, sometimes it's just not very, very good for them. To be very specific with the parents because we don't want them to share that information, so I might say something like they're struggling with making inferences. Rather than saying they're on a level M, so I, that was just all I wanted to share and, um, I appreciate you letting me talk, so, thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it. I'm sorry, my, my audio may be going in and out, I don't know, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Okay, does anybody else have a public comment on a non-agenda item?
Uh, no.
Okay, all right, well then, uh, Harry.
Yeah, just, uh, Dice had asked to use, I guess, three days a week, the school, I mean. Do they pay, do they pay us at all for, for using the school, it's free or? Do they, you know, for.
It's free, it's free for them, Harry, and, and, uh, anybody who wants to use the facilities fills out facilities usage forms, we review them. Uh, we would like to be able to approve everything, we can approve everything, especially now, uh, just as Ms. Mater was saying. Tammy Best, Merle Best, Bobby Hosier, Wayne Endicott, they are, they are working hard every day, all day. And, and Tim Allen, of course, I mentioned him, we. And and Tim Allen, of course, I mentioned him, we we don't want to put. As put more strain on our custodial team, so whenever an organization is asking to use the buildings. That's what happens is that our custodial team now has additional work, so. We have received forms from different organizations, uh, DISA, PTO Recreation Commission. And we've considered each of the requests and we've given responses to them, but uh, it is at no cost to these organizations. If if they use.
So it is a cost to the school board to make sure that all that. Facility is clean properly and that's what becomes an issue because a lot of schools, same thing. You you charge for whomever is using the facility to have the a a janitor, have a maintenance person. Basically there. That's just something we need to consider, but like I say, once again. You know, the school board has given stuff that it to the township, which is great, that's how it should be. But at the same time, we shouldn't be having to struggle to the degree that we are. You know, it's just when organizations use a school building, they, you know, if it's a. A strong union in, they don't even let you in the building. You go to, go to Camden and try to do an after school program without having to pay the uh. You know, the custodial staff, good luck and not just there, a lot of places, it's just doing business. But I I like the idea that we can provide that, but it shouldn't be at a cost to us, that's where I'm coming from with it. We're recognized at the, you know, the city, the community level and the township level. That, you know, there are these little things, think about, you know, there the the library and there used to be two. People that the town was paying and now we've, we're paying one of them and much better than the township.
Harry, that's, I I want to make sure that's accurate, uh, we do have a staff member who works for us that also works for the library. That that doesn't mean we're paying that staff member's total salary for what they do for the township.
Right. Right, that person.
What they do for the district. As a teacher.
Okay, that's fine, but they're they're what, part time, not a full time teacher?
Part time teacher, yes, I just want to make sure it's.
They're accurate, you know, but yeah, I didn't realize she was still working the other. What she had done before she started working for us, I didn't realize she was still doing that, so that's on me. So thanks for clarifying that, Joe.
Okay, um, if there's no other questions for public comment on non-agenda items, I'll close that aspect of the meeting. Um, there obviously is a need to go into executive session before I um, you know, I bring that up. Uh, Joe, will you be sending the board members a special link for executive session?
So there is a a way to access a breakout room, which is what we could do. Uh, but what I was going to say, uh, for the sake of the board, uh, for the sake of the public and everyone involved is, you know, our meeting has already lasted. Three hours and fifteen minutes, what I is that this topic be discussed during the October twentieth meeting. Knowing that we've already reviewed the entire agenda, this gives the board members more time to look at the goals. Uh, and consider uh, anything related to those goals and then a more thorough discussion could take place in the executive on the twentieth.
I'm all in favor of that, I feel, does anybody else oppose that direction?
I'm in favor of that also, thank you, Joe.
Yes.
I'm I'm just, I'm I'm requesting a motion to table those items.
So moved, Joe.
Okay, if that's the case, we will then move forward from that aspect of the agenda and then I will make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have to vote on that with Joe? Do we need to vote on that?
If you made a, I I thought it was just a motion made in jest. If you want an actual motion to table, then you could do a voice vote table. Um, or the, or the board president can just exercise executive privilege and rearrange the agenda. Whatever you want to do.
Okay, that sounds like a good option.
Yeah, then I'm just going to exclude that aspect of the agenda and we can revisit it at next week's meeting. I think that that's a fine thing to be able to do and I think everybody's in agreement to do so. Um, so therefore, I then make it.
Getting started.
No, 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 so I make a motion to adjourn, I saw Phil, Bob second that, Phil motioned and Bob seconded. And I, guys have a wonderful evening.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, everyone.